So we will call this meeting to order on Thursday, July 11th at 7:00 PM. And we will start with roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Hines?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Rose?
Here.
Councilmember Snyder?
Here.
Councilmember Gordon?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Tanner Rose?
Here.
So everyone's present, so next we will do the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the Texas Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Next item is public comment. Any citizen wishing to speak during public comment may do so after completing the required registration form. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the public final agenda will only be heard by the City Council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the City Council. Comments must be courteous and respectful. Accorretted concerns, complaints, and assertions of character regarding specific individuals, including any citizen, staff member, city board, or commission member, or any council member, shall not be raised in a public forum, but should be addressed separately and privately with the city manager or individual member of the City Council. Any person who violates these rules will have their speaking time ended immediately. Any person, including persons in the audience who react in inappropriate or disruptive manner, may be asked to leave the City Council chambers. Each person who is providing public comment will be limited to three minutes. So when I call your name, if you'll come up and state your name and your address, then the time will start. And there's a little light system we have up here where when you have 30 seconds left, it'll go from green to yellow, and then when it goes to red, then your time is up. First one I have Debbie Holland. You mentioned 5B. Do you want to wait till 5B, or do you want to speak now? Speak now? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Debbie Holland, 104 Hutto Street. This evening I have two topics that I'd like to bring before the Council, and they have to do with personal responsibility. This evening the Council will be discussing the Council Protocol Policy. I say this only as a reminder, this is a council-manager-form-of-government. In very simple words, this means the Council has the final say on everything, not the city manager. The city manager works for the seven individuals I am addressing this evening. It is bad governance to be denied any documentation requested by a council member. To be told it is delicate or confidential information is an excuse. If, and I'm afraid it's more when, things begin to deteriorate, the ultimate responsibility falls on the seven individuals on the dais that I am addressing this evening. You've been elected by the citizens of Hutto who exercise their right to vote. We have a very low voter turnout in Hutto, and for that I am embarrassed. Be assured, as deals fall through and illegal or unethical practices are uncovered, the citizens of Hutto will be looking at you for answers. I didn't know anything about it. Will not be an acceptable response to your constituents. With that said, I urge the Council to demand from the city manager that documents being requested to be reviewed by any council member and that they be provided in a timely manner. It is your responsibility as a council member to fully understand what contracts are being signed, and the commitments that are being made are in the best interest of the citizens. Remember that at the end of the day, council is who is responsible, because you are at the top of the organization chart, not the city manager. My second concern is personnel of the city. I understand when the current city manager was hired, he was given authority to clean house. This happens in other cities, businesses, and school districts. However, I would ask the Council to look at the turnover rate of city staff, beginning with the city manager's first hires. It would not surprise me to find that percentage is larger than the number of former employees that he terminated while cleaning house. It's not the role of the Council to interfere with the hiring and the firing of city staff. However, it is the Council's responsibility to question why the large turnover rate that has occurred in the last two years. Does this Council want to be known for looking the other way, allowing bad governance? Or do you want to be known for standing up, doing your job, and protecting the citizens of Hutto? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just so the record is clear, there was never a directive to this city manager by anyone to clean house upon his hiring. The terminations that have happened and the turnover have largely been the result of employees getting other offers that allowed them to pursue career opportunities.
Thank you for your opinion.
Paul Martin, 115 Buescher Cove. Good evening. Glad I'm here. Come tonight, having concerns, I put down calendar. I belong to a HOA that has scheduled in the past meetings here at the brand-new facilities. The last two times that we have set ourselves on the calendar, which I called and asked three weeks, four weeks ahead of time, we've been bumped twice. And the last time, it was two days before we were scheduled to meet. So my question is to this city council, if a citizen HOA has scheduled in a timely manner to have a meeting, can they be bumped at the last minute by the city council? Because you guys chose that this is your council space, and you have the right to just move someone out. We have to have a 10-day notice. It puts us in a real bind. I look at it a little differently. This chamber belongs to the city. If we follow the rules correctly, we schedule in a timely manner, all I ask is you respect the same thing. If you're going to schedule correctly, and if you guys are doing your job, it would be polite enough to call up and say, hey, we have a bind. Can we butt you out? And if it's impossible for us to not move, I guess we got a problem. But that meeting really created a hardship for us. So my question is, does the city council really have the right to go ahead and say, leave? Or are you going to adhere to the calendar? If someone's penciled in, and has been penciled in, can you have the courtesy of adhering to a calendar? The citizens of this city should have the right to be able to hold their spot, just like this council. It's common courtesy. And from what I understand, you didn't even use the time period that was there. So, you know, this is something that I want to look at this council and say, I'm a citizen. I feel I own this just as much as you do. Am I wrong? Anyone want to comment?
Unfortunately, we can't comment, because it's not an item on our agenda. So you can do that. We can have the city manager come back and give permission.
I'd like to see you guys publish a comment on it, because I think the community needs to know. Does this council chamber belong to the community, or does it belong to just you guys?
I think we can have maybe add it to an agenda item where we talk about the use of this, discussion of this building.
My time's up.
Next we have Timothy. Is it you?
Mark.
Mark.
My name is Timothy Martin. I live at 216 Quail Circle. I wanted to bring up two points. My first one was actually regarding Agenda Mida 8A, which I will be interested to see the council's comments on planning for. But first, I'd really like to touch base on the young lady that came up before us regarding the hiring and firing of individuals in the city. I'm going to put this out there just as an editorial. Take it with what you will. I'm a disabled veteran, U.S. Air Force. I enjoyed my time. I moved to this city three years ago on purpose, not by accident. I bought my home in a very specifically chosen location in what I thought was going to be a prime spot for raising my family. I looked for a job in the local community. I have 20 years' experience in my field between telecommunications and construction management. I'm an OSHA trainer, so is my father, who is also my business partner. He spoke just before. I reached out to the city for a job that was open in permit issuance, a low-level counter job, entry position. I had worked for the federal government for nigh on eight years, with a wonderful track record in California, and moved here because we wanted to escape. I thought that coming here would give me a better opportunity. I received not less than three different emails from your hiring HR official, including the hiring manager for the city of Hutto, telling me that I was an overqualified candidate to review permits for building and codes. I would really like for anybody to explain to me what an overqualified candidate means. And when I asked that question, the response I got back from the HR manager was that a more suitable candidate had been found. If I'm above your standards, if my level of expertise and education is higher than that which you are hiring for, and I am not arguing about the pay schedule, the job, or the understanding of the commitment of that job, why was I denied not only the opportunity to work for this city, to provide for my family? I was also told that I wasn't given a good reason other than I was overqualified. And I tell you I'm a disabled veteran, because the state of Texas states that as a disabled veteran, I have the legal right to demand from HR why the other candidate was chosen over me. The candidate that is currently occupying that position has less skills. They do not have the same background that I have, nor do they have the years of experience that I have. So I really would love if somebody could explain to me why the city is telling me that we're hiring competent people and turning away those of us that are quote-unquote "unqualified." But I want you to know that this overqualified patron of this city, this taxpayer, this resident, is paying attention because of a nigh $1 billion complex that's going in one block from my little home on the outside of town that I bought three years ago to raise my children, which is now going to be a construction site for two years. Please understand, you are being watched.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to speak on 8A tonight, and that's on the budget review process. The first thing I wanted to reference, y'all have heard me before on this, on the Penn-Holmstrom House. I would respectfully request that y'all include that in your budget process. When campaigns were going on at the college, everyone said we support historical preservation, preserving the history of Hutto and Old Town specifically. And I just want to encourage you to continue with that support. Additionally, you will be discussing tax rates, I'm sure, in the next couple of months as part of the budget cycle. And wanted to let you know that I've lived here at 108 West Live Oak Street for 42 years. For 42 years, I've been paying my taxes in this community. And for the most part, yes, they have gone up. But I'm glad to pay those taxes when we get good return on services. And I think that to a large degree, that's happening with the city, with the school, with the fire department, with the ESD actually, and with the college. But when you look at the numbers, the city is slightly currently less than 52 cents per $100 valuation. The county is almost 42 cents. The ESD is 9.6 cents. The ISD is 167. The college is a nickel. The farm and market road portion is another 4 cents, and the flood part's another 2 cents. That adds up to about 273. And I expect taxes to go up, and think they will. On the city level, I think you all have done a good job. That's less than 20% of the overall tax bill that I pay every year, and that most of the people in this community pay every year. So just encourage you to do a reasonable budget that has a lot of common sense attached to it, and will not break people's backs in this community, but still continue to provide the services. I see great things happening in Hutto now. I'm a pro-growth person and proponent of a lot of this growth, and I think that eventually we're going to see it come back and help us reduce taxes. It's the growing pains that have kept us from being able to achieve that. I thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Next we have Havila Merritt. Did I say that right?
No. No one ever does. My name is Havila Merritt, and I live at 708 Luna Vista Drive. Havila.
I'll remember that.
Thank you. So I'm here on behalf of HYPSA, that's the Hutto Youth Baseball and Softball Association. My comments are short and sweet. We met last night with the Parks Department, and we were told about the developments that are coming, the new fields that will be at Creekside and at Magger Lane. We were updated as to the conceptual plans for them, and the things that might be happening in the future. Nothing definite was brought out. We are very excited as a league for the coming ball fields. We are excited for the facilities that our kids will be able to play on, and we are looking forward to the coming of Perfect Game and our relationship with them, and opportunities for the kids of Hutto. We just wanted to reaffirm our stance on that. Thank you.
Next we have Kevin Grum.
Mayor, Council. Kevin Grum, 227 Tolcarne Drive. What I'd like to speak about is, we keep using the word transparency. That's not a word that needs to be focused on right now. It needs to be respect. That is something I've seen a lot lately this council does not have. You do not have it for each other. You do not have it for, I believe, the citizens. When people go to Facebook and they want to post polls about transparency, that's not being respectful. I understand there's issues. It always happens, whether it's in government, business, work, whatever. But you take care of those issues, and you don't bring it to the public and drag everybody into it. And respect is just being around and listening to people, looking at them, knowing what's going on. Having this conversation on the dais that y'all have had the last couple of times is not. It makes us as citizens look at y'all and go, hmm, what are y'all going to accomplish if y'all can't accomplish anything together? So, very simple. I think the word transparency needs to go away for a little bit, and maybe think about everybody else, and how it should be handled in a proper fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Terry Grum.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Terry Grum, 227 Tolcarne Drive. I want to start first with a quick thank you to Councilmember Tanner Rose for his generosity on a personal level and helping my family during a difficult time. Thank you. Let me be clear, I love Facebook. So for anybody that's watching this goes, you know, Terry's a hypocrite. I'm truly beside myself what has happened in the last week with our council, especially on Facebook. We want to talk about transparency, well, let's just do that, shall we? How about we start with the whole truth, not just half the truth, a little bit of the truth? Because sure, you're transparent, you're honest, but if you're not being fully honest, I don't probably recall that. At last week's council meeting, I watched as you all went around and around, and around and around, and around some more, over something that has already been approved. During that same meeting, Senator Jones stated he would give what was asked an executive session as a council and to the council. He then stated he had given an executive session what was asked, and no one argued, so I'm going to assume that that was an accurate statement. So we went into a tantrum on Facebook, because we were on the two-side of a 5-2 vote to change what had already been approved with the word execute. History is important, in my opinion. It can show how council protocol policy is updated, how it goes, why things are the way they are. I think a good start for some of you would be to inquire why I, Terry Grum, was actually Councilman Tanner Rose's opponent and not someone else. Not just the last few months since you decided to get involved in matter either. You need to go back a few times. We all want to get all on Facebook, causing a shitstorm. Mayor, I apologize, it won't happen again. But only to people who won't challenge it. Why is that? Transparency only, please. We went on Facebook again, talked about Senate Bill 2. You guys were given options, if I'm correct, but for some reason, we only told half of it and talked about this 33% increase, not the other two. So we caused all this hysteria, and you guys haven't officially discussed it. I'm not quite sure I understand that. Do you guys do this much research on all the other projects we've got going on? This is an embarrassment to this community. When you begin to do what should be on this dais, and you start doing it off this dais, you can sit up here all day and all night long debating with each other. Once that gavel slams down, this is where it stays. To Councilman Gordon, I'm sorry that you were treated with such disrespect off this dais and on Facebook is absolutely uncalled for. The fact that you felt that you actually had to go around and defend yourself on your own campaign page from another council member is beyond me. People really need to start looking at the problem here. And a few of you called me unprofessional. The pot is a culvert. I would suggest from now on, go on Facebook. That's fine, but if you're going to be transparent, be transparent about all of it, not just what suits your argument, and not just to the people that support you. Because you're not getting accurate results, are you? I didn't think so. Thank you for all your time. Please, in the future, stop making an embarrassment to us and to yourselves with ridiculous amount of time and debate over meetings.
That was three minutes.
That was not, I saw two seconds left. Thank you. Stop debating over the meeting minutes, it's ridiculous.
We've got one more. Paul Mottaras?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Paul Mottaras. I'm an attorney, and I represent Wolverine interests in connection with the Perfect Game project. I've been involved advising them in connection with various agreements that have been entered into up to today. And I was asked to look at the review, your last council meeting, and obviously, there were some questions related to the status of the project. And it appeared to me that maybe you might have some additional questions. There was some question about, you know, have you been kept up to speed on everything, received all the information that you've requested? So when I saw that, I immediately advised my people that they ought to come tonight, to tonight's meeting, because we noticed that there's a related topic that appears on the executive session. So I just encourage them, we've heard a little bit about transparency already in the last few minutes, I just encourage them to be available and be transparent in the event that any of you had any questions for us. That's all.
So we will go now, that was all the public comments I have. I do have one for a public hearing. Scott Carter. You're doing during a public hearing on that agenda item? Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Next item we have is 5A, consideration possible action or resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase needed equipment for public safety such as floodlights, generators, signal signs, and barricades at an amount not to exceed 115,000.
Good evening, Mayor Gahl, Council. I'm here tonight to present a consideration of purchasing tower lights with generators and full matrix message boards in regards to public safety and staff safety. I feel the items being mentioned are needed in protecting and warning our citizens and the various department staffs that will be using this equipment during construction, park, downtown, amphitheater events, and emergencies in day or nighttime situations. Currently, the Streets and Drainage Department has one message board that is shared by Public Works, Parks, Downtown, PD, and we usually rent light towers for use 5th of April. The light towers and generators are currently rented for use in all city events, and some examples of that are the Sunset Block Party, the 4th of July Celebration, Coke Fest, the Christmas lighting, and events similar. Public Works does not have a light tower and depend on the light provided by equipment and truck-mounted spotlights during nighttime emergencies. I feel that these pieces of equipment mentioned will help us in providing advanced warning to our citizens and save the city with the cost of rental fees. I have a couple of examples of some of the equipment that we are looking at. These are the actual full-matrix message boards, that we currently only have one, and these are the light towers that we're looking to purchase in consideration with this resolution.
How often, are you ready for questions?
Yes, sir.
How often do you have a demand for 10 light towers at once?
So in the Public Works Department, very, not very often. These are mostly needed for the events, to be able to light the parking lot areas, or for, needed as events that are downtown for lighting for the safety of our citizens. I would say possibly two of these 10 would be needed for use in Public Works.
What's a typical rental cost for that?
So some examples that I received in talking with downtown, for a message board for a daily rental costs $250, $250. The light towers, I think the light towers were $100 apiece in rental fees. And that's daily.
Mark, do you know what was the total cost? And maybe you don't. Jess, I think you may know this. When your department leased the light towers for the event on 4th of July?
Yes, sir.
Including all of that, what was the total cost of all of them?
Yes, for the July 4th event, all the light towers and generators that were rented for that event, just for that one-day event, and one-day rental, it was a cost of $2,200. So with the added events that are expected at the amphitheater, I figured out some numbers, and with those numbers, just for the light towers and 20 events, we were looking at $44,000 with these new events coming.
And I'll add that for the events, we do use all 10. So that is just, you know, to cover a parking area, and the, if we're doing events both at the amphitheater and at the pavilion, or if we're out at Fritz Park as well, we typically do use all 10. And that's just for safety out at the park.
And you have about 20 events total that's going to be done at the amphitheater?
Yeah, we have over 20 is what we're anticipating, having annually out at the amphitheater site.
Starting this year?
Starting this year, correct.
Okay. And then how many normal community events you have at the parks?
Over at the parks, between the downtown department, as well as the Parks Department as well, over at Fritz Park, I would say we have another 6, 7, just at Fritz Park. And then we have another, the rest of them are out at downtown. So throughout the city, we have just city-operated events over 54 different event dates, and those are spread out between downtown, Fritz Park, and... and those are spread out between downtown, Fritz Park, and Pollard Park, sorry, Brushy Creek Park. And then on top of that, we also have the new twenty-plus events that'll be happening at the amphitheater.
Are those city events, or are those events with the management group out there?
The fifty-four-plus event dates are city events. If I were to add in the parks events on that, you're looking more at sixty event dates that are run by the city. Then the twenty-plus, that is the amphitheater events that will be held at the amphitheater.
I think one of my concerns is, to me, ten is a lot. And I wouldn't really have a problem with ten, but I would...I'm looking at maintenance and replacement cycles as well. You know, if right now the goal is to get ten, to me, it makes sense to go with five this year, maybe do another five next year, and then your replacement cycle, you know, you have a bad year, you only have to replace ten, or five, instead of the ten. That's kinda where I'm at.
I have a question on Exhibit A. So, is each light seventy-three thousand, or seventy-nine, or...
No, that's a total price for ten. Each light is, has their individual price. I believe the seventy-three thousand dollar bid was seven thousand three hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars per unit.
Okay, and just by chance, since we use a lot of this at the amphitheater, do you all know, have we looked at a budget for actual permanent lighting structures that are out there?
We had at the time with the design of the amphitheater, it was a couple million to do it. So, that's one of the reasons why we decided that it'd be best. In fact, in our contract, it requires us to provide some level of lighting in the parking lot, and that's why we thought it'd be best to take that approach.
Can you say it again? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I said, "In our current contract, it requires us to take, to provide some level of lighting in the parking lot as patrons are leaving."
All right.
These laws will be used whenever you're doing road repair, water line repair, everything else at night, correct?
Yes, sir.
Will be able to have a sign both directions?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm kinda leaning on the same vein as Councilman Rose. I really like the idea of not having to replace all of them, because if you buy all of them at the same time, they're all gonna wear out at the same time. Getting on some kind of a replacement cycle to where we buy half of them now and we continue to rent the other half as we need them, and then continue to kinda go on that vein, that's kinda...I think that was a good suggestion, and that kinda sounded good to me. The message boards, so the three, we have currently one that's shared between all those...
Currently, we only have one.
Okay. And then how many do we typically have to rent?
Downtown usually has to rent usually anywhere from two to three message boards, depending on the size of the event.
Okay. And we use these for road projects plus event notifications plus flooding?
So, the one we have, yes.
Right?
We use it...if PD has an event, if Downtown Parks has an event, that message board is used for that reason.
For safety, for announcement of the events, or for traffic flow directional signage, we use those.
Yep. To me, the three seemed reasonable on that one.
Mm-hmm. And so, for example, if we were to have an event down at the park, we would have, you know, one along Seventy-Nine, we'd have one if you're heading southbound into the park, and then if you're heading northbound, you know, you have the hill there. So, it's important that we have one on that side, too, so making people aware of those coming in and out of the park and that there's a turn coming up.
So, the only reason I don't like the five idea is because we're doing our own roads now. We're gonna start working a little later in the evening or earlier in the morning because of the heat. What happens if we have a road construction project going on and then we have an event? Do we stop the road construction to light up the event, or do we not have the event to continue the road construction?
My assumption would be we just rent more, rent whatever we're short, but we just wouldn't have as many because we own some.
We could, but we could also do the replacement cycle with, we used to start replacing three lights, and then next year, you replace three lights, and then three lights. You don't have to...just because you bought them all at once doesn't mean they're all gonna go out at the same time. I've seen the street department and, you know, the road to parks, they all take pretty good care of their equipment. I don't foresee them going out, you know, at any time. I just don't want them to be limited in the scope of carrying out the duties that we're asking them to do, or the, you know, the contracts that we have with different vendors, or the safety of the public leaving our parking lots, leaving our events. It's just my opinion.
How old are our light towers and our message board? Do you know, like, how long have we bought those and what their lifespan is roughly?
So, we only have the one message board. We don't have any light towers right now. So, all we have is truck-mounted lights and equipment-mounted lights, but I would say ten years out of those message boards, I think, in the three years that I've been here, well, I know, but in the three years that I've been here, the message board has only went out once on us, and that was due to a bad part, but under warranty, that was covered and we didn't have to pay for anything.
And the cost, did you get a warranty contract to protect them?
Yes, sir.
How long?
Two-year warranties on message boards and on the light towers.
I know that we collect some funds from the events that will be happening down there at the amphitheater. Is there a way to...I mean, is the idea to supplement and pay these off through those extra funds? Because these will be mostly used for that, I would, you know, if we did ten.
Yeah, those dollars are actually, to the chair, members of council, those dollars are actually general fund revenues that what we've targeted was, was to have those funds go towards the maintenance and upkeep of all of the city parks. What the goal was initially is to take the revenue that you're making from the amphitheater and that you're making from the other event activities, and use that to fans the general maintenance of all of our park system, including our park department and everything else. I would also suggest to you as well, is, you know, our street department now is, we've advanced to where we're doing our own roads and streets. And I know with our current road crew right now, we have, we have what we call renters. In other words, when we're doing a road or street, we have some time, multiple trucks going to pick up asphalt and driving it to the site and so forth and so on. So, and just think about, you know, the manpower and time equation is a part of the efficiency of the lights, and I think initially, that's what we were examining, is that we felt that if we had the ten lights, it would help us better manage the multiple activities that are going on, plus the manpower issue when we're currently, you know, when we're running in asphalt. Our hope is, you know, given our next year's plan, our hope was, as well as the plan for doing some of the streets, is to start having this work a little bit in the mornings and at nights, just because of the heat. I mean, we've...our guys are...we had a few issues here recently with the heat. So, these things will help us manage that a little bit, but certainly, we look forward to your decision on it.
Is this coming from the utility fund or from the general fund to purchase these?
It will be coming from the general fund.
I would just say one thing, and I'm not sure if this is handled in the budget process or not, but if we're going to build an amphitheater, and at some point, I assume we sat down and had a budget for the amphitheater, going forward, I'd like us to find a way to figure out what we need and then to put all that in there so that we're not coming back. You know, we just opened up the amphitheater and we're already finding out, no, we need lights, and then so my fear is, is this is a needed cost based on your, it sounds like it's a needed cost based on twenty-two hundred dollars an event day, but then are there other things that we didn't budget for that now we're having to come back and either we're renting and costing ourselves more money, or we're coming back and we're gonna be asked, you know, three hundred thousand here and four hundred thousand there, and eventually, I mean, the people's gonna start getting wound up that, you know, every time we meet, we're spending money that not budgeted, but I don't know if that's future budget things we can figure out.
Well, I think, just to clarify, I mean, we knew that on the amphitheater, there'd be additional expenses going forward, but we didn't want to pay for them now. We wanted to wait till we had events, and the whole point was to use the money from those events to make, pay for those park improvements and pay for things. So, we do know, over the next few years, I mean, like, there may be some additional fencing, why pay it now? You know, let's wait till we get the money from the events and then take some of that revenue to buy some of those things.
Except for this point, we're spending the money before we get the revenue.
This isn't just for the park, though?
But it's just not for those events at the amphitheaters, for the ones like Sunset Down at Fritz Park that they've had.
No, I'm with you.
And for the utility, I mean, I think the roads...
We spent nine hundred thousand last...
I was gonna say, if we spent close to a million last week to get them all the road equipment, we should give them the resources to do it at all hours of the day as well. I mean, if we're gonna make that commitment there, we should probably make the commitment here, otherwise, why did we spend a million or just shy of a million last week as well? I mean, take that into consideration for this as well.
One observation I would add to what Councilmember Tanner Rose just pointed out is, the advantage of the mobile lights is, you can use it both at the amphitheater and for roadwork as necessary. That's the advantage of having this, these units. If you'd put all of this money and more into lights at the amphitheater, you'd still be renting lights for roadwork and other activities.
I have one more question, Mark. So, last week, I asked you, did you have enough space for all your trucks? Now, if we give you ten lights and some more light boards, are you running out of space? Or do you have capacity over there to store all your trucks and all these once everything gets purchased and put into place?
It's starting to get tight, but we could make it work. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I would recommend, if it's getting tight and we're gonna continue to expand, to put something for next year in the five-year plan for space for them before we get blindsided with it moving forward, so.
And one thing I didn't think about before about renting, you know, my thought was, let's just rent what we don't need, but do you run into issues when you go to try to rent something and they don't have any available? Does that ever happen?
So, in the Public Works Department, when an emergency happens at night, we don't have the capability to do that.
There's no way? Okay. That makes sense. Okay.
So, Mayor, I make a motion to approve Item 5A, consideration possible action or resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase needed equipment for public safety such as floodlights, generators, signal signs, and barricades at an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Snyder. Second by Councilmember Tanner Rose. Any question on the motion? Call for vote?
Mayor Gahl?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Pines?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Rose?
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Tanner Rose?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Motion passed at seven-zero.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda is consideration possible action or resolution amending city council protocol.
Mayor and Council, I'll be helping Emily with this because a large part of it is mine. Emily, if you don't mind me leading off.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
This is a follow-up on the city council retreat, in part, a follow-up on the city council retreat, in which we identified some council practices that were not written protocols in the protocol manual, and there was one item, which is a change to state law. It's on the agenda tonight as a resolution. At the end of tonight, we'll ask for a resolution directing, if you wanna make any of these changes, that you debate them out tonight and direct the city attorney to come back with a revised ordinance that will put them in the protocols at next Thursday's meeting. All right? The first change is on page four of the protocol manual that's in the materials under 5B, and this was a miscommunication. The change would leave all of E in, but would change E's title. E's title currently is appointments. It would change it to say Protocol for Appointment of City Boards or Commissions and EDC Board of Directors. All we would be adding to what's there is a final paragraph that says, "No person shall be appointed to a city-created board or commission and/or the EDC board unless that person has timely filled out and submitted an appropriate application to the city secretary before the meeting at which they are appointed by the city council. Provided, however, an application does not need to be submitted for (1) a person being reappointed to a position, or (2) a city council member being appointed to the EDC Board of Directors." This is, this was a protocol of the council that was never formally adopted. Two or three years ago, the council adopted a, the system which is outlined in sub-paragraph four, that each council member got to nominate somebody to each board and commission. The idea was at the time, though, that whoever was going to be appointed should fill out an application. We, it was never formalized into a written protocol. However, in recent meetings at which we, the councils talked about appointment of boards and commission, it's clear that members of the council think it is a formal protocol. I offer this just to either formalize that or have the council say it's not one of our protocols. And the idea around it originally was if, if Councilmember Rose, either one of them, nominates someone, the person ought to indicate an interest to be appointed by filling out an application, and that application is available to the other council members to look at before the meeting at which that appointment's taken.
So, is the process on this as changes come up? Have we have a comment to give a comment, or what's the...
Yes.
I would only ask that, as big as our city is getting, as fast as it's growing, I don't know that we need the need for the city council to have the opportunity to appoint themselves to EDC boards. I think we have a variety enough of talent in our community that if we're doing our jobs and interacting with the public, we ought to be able to find someone that can serve on EDC. That's just my opinion.
And I agree with you, I think we should be able to fill that, but I think the bylaws, EDC bylaws do state that council, council members can fulfill that position, so...
And we're in the process of updating those, too, as well, correct?
Yeah, so the bylaws, if those bylaws change, so really, this would kinda be matching the bylaws right now, but still allowing a city council member to be it. But I agree, we should be able to get enough people now to fill that.
So, what would come first, city attorney? If we wanted to make that change, do you make it into protocol and then the bylaws? Or do you fix the bylaws and then change the protocol? And that's if the council wanted to change it.
You could do it either way. If you fix it in...if you fix it here, fixing it here won't matter, because all this says is, if Councilmember Tanner Rose wants to appoint himself, then does he have to fill out an application or not? That's all this does, okay? If you want to change the bylaw, if you wanna make it so city council members will never serve on a, on a board or commission, then you'd need to change...
The charter or the bylaws?
The bylaws. You'd have to, well, there's two different things. For the EDC, you're gonna have to change the bylaws.
Yeah.
For the, well, the charter deals with all city boards and commissions. Actually, Councilmember Tanner Rose, a couple of meetings ago, pointed out, the charter actually addresses city council members being on boards and commissions. So, all you'd have to do is amend the bylaws of the two EDC corporations, and you would stop that from happening.
Yep. So, we would not need to make a change to this at all?
No.
No. Because once you make a change to the bylaws...
If we decide, please, council members, they don't have to fill out an application.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, what I'm afraid is, we make that change, let's say we agree to make that change, we come, someone else comes back in three years and goes, "Well, that's weird, a city council member being appointed to the EDC Board of Directors is in here, but the bylaws say they're not." And so, I just propose, if we're okay making that move, we take out the last sentence, and then there's no application process in this, and then at some point, when the EDC brings the bylaws back to be revised, because I think we're in the process of that, then we can suggest that change there, and then we don't have a, some kind of rogue comment somewhere, but I think we need to change the bylaws first and then make this match, because we may, we may not vote to change that bylaw. It may come before this council, and we may not choose to eliminate city council members from serving on it. I don't know. That's not on the agenda, we can't consider that tonight, and so, I think that would be premature to kinda do it here, assuming we're gonna make a decision that we haven't even deliberated on.
I agree.
Just to clarify, one, the bylaws would trump this. Just to clarify, one, the bylaws would trump this though, right? Whatever the bylaw says would, would be above this.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the next, the next proposed change is on page eighteen. It's under paragraph D on page eighteen.
Can we, before we get that, there's one on eight, I was wondering. Should we update public comment for the new state law that takes effect on September?
Yes, we should.
Should that, I mean, I guess, yeah, we don't have to wait until September.
You just need to pass a resolution directing me to, to draft a change to eight, paragraph E on page eight, to make it consistent with the change to state law.
So we would need to do a motion to have that on the next meeting's agenda?
Just part of the resolution to direct me to bring back to the next, next meeting.
So, yeah, so tonight, we're just gonna approve the resolution with any of the changes for them to come back, and then we'll actually approve the council protocol at the next meeting on the eighteenth.
Yes.
Under ordinance, not under resolution.
Under an ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, because in reading through it, I had some other suggested changes that I didn't know if we wanted to talk about them tonight or kind of when we were gonna do it.
The posting allows you to talk about any protocol changes you wanna, you want, and they'll come back up next time.
I guess, then let's, let's just go page by page.
Yeah, can we?
Okay.
Let's, let's go page by page, I mean.
Do we need to go above where we were with the boards and commissions, or start there?
Let's, I mean, does anybody have anything before, page eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Scrolling. Okay, page six, two A. There is a sentence here that says, talks about getting things on the city council agenda. It says, there are questions to state the nature of the item, the desired action by the city council includes supporting material. Once all items are submitted, they are reviewed and approved by the city manager. I just had a question on there, why it wouldn't be approved by the city manager and mayor, since the mayor was part of kind of the discussions on what gets on there. It just seemed to me like the mayor should be part of that.
Good catch.
I agree.
Would that be and city mayor?
I think it's just mayor, right?
City manager and mayor, yeah.
Well, the, you've got to allow the city manager the ability to put things on the agenda because there's things that are specific to state laws, specific to items that he's got to be able to put on the agenda. And if I'm out of town, or I mean, I, I mean, I don't want him calling me up and saying, hey, can I put this budget amendment on there that needs to, that he has to meet because of state law or something like that.
If you're out of town, that should fall to the mayor pro temp.
But mayor pro temp, but still, if the city, the city manager still has the ability to put things on the agenda that are under the require, I mean, that's part of his job, is be able to put things on the agenda.
Well, I agree with you, however.
But this happens after that.
If that's the point, then I don't like the sentence of, once all items are submitted, they are reviewed and approved by the city manager.
Yeah, because they've been submitted.
Because if he doesn't approve of it, then it never makes the agenda.
Yeah.
So we can, all seven of us, the way I'm interpreting this, all seven of us can ask for one thing to be put on the agenda, and if the city manager doesn't want it there, he can take it off.
So it should say or city manager?
I would say city manager and mayor.
I mean, or, city manager, or.
And/or.
Not or, I would say and. I, I think they need to do it together, right? I, I think.
But, I mean, I agree. I think the difference is the wording, if you do and, then you're gonna need both, and then you go back to what Councilman Rose is saying. If you do or, and the mayor's out, and the mayor pro temp's out, an item can be put on there by the mayor or the city manager, and then that fixes any issues.
City manager and mayor, or in his absence, mayor pro temp.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, there's other.
How likely is that gonna happen? I don't know. I just.
But I think to Scott's point, I think it's, it's by doing the and/or, if you do have that situation, I mean, hopefully you won't ever have that, but we're, you've got several council members wanting something on the agenda, the mayor has the.
If the city manager's not available, the mayor could do it then, I guess, is that?
If we have two council members that ask to have something put on the agenda, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, per the charter anyway.
Right, but then this count, this sentence comes back, so it's, it's assuming up at the top, two members of the city council can request and replace an item on the agenda, and we say, give the deadline of when that can happen. The request has already been submitted, and so once they're submitted and reviewed, then, as it's worded now, the city manager and the city manager only decides what goes on. That's the way I read it. Maybe I'm reading it wrong.
So I think what needs to happen is, once all items are submitted, they're reviewed and approved by the city manager, that whole sentence maybe, maybe needs to be struck, because per the charter.
Right, I think something needs to be added there. I believe the once approved, that, that line there is for items like the one we just voted on. If a department head comes to the city manager and says, hey, we really need this equipment, there, there aren't two city council members up here that ask to put that on the agenda.
No, I agree.
He has to have, he has to have some leeway to, to be able to approve stuff to be put on the city.
No, I agree with it, especially because there's stuff that they need from, from us, we won't know.
And I think that's the content of that, we just need to add something to, to say, to say that that's what that is, you know, and leave the top part alone, because that is what that is.
That's what you're saying, add the and/or to.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, please.
Mayor, members of council, look, the charter says you have one employee, that's me. So, you know, I will never, I'm always going to be vetting what items I'd like to come to you and ask. You know, as the manager, I'm never going to allow something to come to my city council that I'm not comfortable with, because it's me pursuing to the charter, it's making a recommendation to you. And therefore, you know, I, I personally think that the suggestion of doing and/or is probably appropriate. I know just the way we work today, the mayor and I are talking every day, most of the time.
The mayor pro temp and myself.
And we get together, we get together every Tuesday.
The three of us meet the week before to review the agenda.
We do.
And so we, to make sure, anything the council members want to get on their, so, I mean, that's kind of the way we're operating. So I, I think just saying after by the city manager and/or mayor is sufficient.
I like it. Because my approach to this whole thing has been independent of us, right? We're writing a policy that would apply to any and every person who, who sits in one of our seats, including the city manager, right? And so we set up a policy irrespective of who the individuals are, but just kind of as a general.
And, you know, I think and/or works too, to that point, mayor, members of council, because, you know, you take, for example, if we had an emergency that took place in the city, which we, we've had a couple of times, right, where I've come to the council and asked the council to declare an emergency. You know, though, I need to be able to put those items on the agenda, especially, you know, when it comes down to whether it's public safety issues or whether it's utility issues, matters of concern. Last year dealt with both of those emergency items, dealt with water and sewer availability to our citizens. So, you know, when, when I'm in that kind of situation, there are statutory provisions that allow for the manager to declare an emergency on a scene, but then I'm required to report at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. So there, there are some items in a case of safety and welfare of citizens that I, I need to be able to put items on the agenda, and therefore I think the, the and/or, you know, allows for that to happen.
Okay. Anything else on page six? Just we'll just walk through this page by page. Page seven?
For me?
Page eight?
So we said two E, I had in two E.
Eight.
We had already talked about updating that to match with.
The new state law, yeah.
The new state laws, and so we'll do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are they updating the Open Meetings Act for that change, or is it just a state law that was passed?
I think somehow they tie it all together. I don't.
I believe they just amended the Open Meetings Act.
Oh, is that, okay.
Can I suggest something to mayor, members of council, is maybe what you might want to even consider is having that provision as it relates to Open Meeting Act to kind of automatically update as the, as the, as the legis, as the law changes, so you're not having to go backwards and forward, because ultimately, no matter what you, what you have here, we still have to buy by the Open Meeting Act.
It trumps it, right?
Yeah.
They only meet every two years, so I think it, I think it's good for us to actually come back and have that. If they change something, it does change it, I think it's good for us to be able to review it.
I agree.
It's not like, it's not like they're changing state law on us every month.
You do also have other changes that are reflected in there that are done to that suggestion, for example, on retention rules. So rather than specifically stating a retention time, it just states to match the State Libraries and Archives Commission retention schedule. So that way, as things update, the protocols are automatically updated to match that.
Is there a way to put like a hyperlink in there for us to like click into it if we want to?
Certainly.
Someone like to that, like saying, hey, here's the, here's what it says, but then there's also the link to where that states.
Okay. Page nine?
So on G?
I've got an F.
Oh, F.
So two F, it says in here that, that for public hearings, that the time limit is three minutes. We have never adhered to that in the past. We, for public hearings, we've allowed people to go over the time limit. We've not set that. Are we saying that we're gonna set a limit now? Or have we just never adhered to the policy?
We've, we've tried, we've tried to, I mean, it, it, it's kind of a, I mean, yeah, we try to stay to three minutes, but I also want citizens to be able to have, speak, if they're, you know, if a citizen's got a concern, so. I think you can maybe do, I, I think it's maybe this, each speaker will, I'm fine with the public, I mean, you don't want somebody getting up here doing grandstanding for forty minutes on a public hearing.
Yeah, but this is gonna limit them, right? This will say they only have three minutes, and if we want to go more, we need to.
Because you want to make sure that we get all the input from the citizen, especially from a standpoint of a public hearing.
But increase it to five minutes? I mean, would that give them more time? Do we increase the amount of time?
I mean, five minutes should be sufficient to get your point across.
I'm good with five.
But, but public hearing allows us also to interact, in a public hearing, we can interact with them, so they, once they get, once we interact and ask questions, that three minutes goes away. That's kind of where.
That's where I was going. I, I would like, my suggestion would be to have no time limit mentioned here, but to say at the discretion of the chair.
The chair.
Discretion of the mayor, that, you know, we could say, okay.
Because when they, yeah, but in a public hearing, it's a little more, because you're, you're talking about a specific topic so that you can have that interaction with the citizen.
I'm not okay with that to discretion, and you guys are finding I always think of worst case. So let's say the mayor, I'm out there, and the mayor's like, I don't want to hear from this guy anymore. And so I come up to talk, and he's like, you got thirty seconds, and that's it. And so I think we just stick to a time, at least then, good or bad, whatever that time is. Like the mayor said, in a lot of other cities, you're able to speak for that time, and then once you start asking questions, it could go for thirty minutes if you had enough questions.
Could you save?
Maybe put a minimum five minutes, and then, or longer at the council's discretion?
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May I suggest that you establish a time and then provide that if questions are asked by the council, the speaker may be allowed to go beyond that.
Yeah, so you've worded to say that, I mean, so they have three minutes to speak, but then once the council reacts, interacts, that's kind of five minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just do five minutes, it'll be extended. Yeah. That's all I had on that one.
Okay, G?
G, I'd like to see special meetings. I know we're talking about it from a budgetary standpoint, but I feel like we just need to capture it, that special meetings will start being strained, and.
I think that's something we'll have to wait until after we see if it is actually a thing, and then come back and change it.
My personal opinion, there's not a cost that it could be that would stop me from wanting that to be special, because as we, like, tonight is a special meeting, and so no one has the ability to either show up at seven o'clock or you miss the information. And we at least owe it to the people that we're gonna have special meetings, in my opinion, and the only way to force us into that is to go ahead and start capturing it.
We are video and audio recording tonight, and we'll have it on the website tomorrow.
Okay, so we found a way to do that internally? Okay.
So can we add it now?
I'm gonna add it. You started doing that based off the council retreat?
Yes, when we discussed it at the council retreat, we checked out our system. We had actually discussed that at the retreat, that we had the capability of doing that. We're going to be doing it with all boards and commission meetings, all special call meetings, and actually public events, like library events that are held in the council chambers.
So the only thing, it needs to, G needs to say video and audio.
Okay.
It, it just, it references just video throughout there, and so anyplace we've got the video, it needs to say video and audio.
And can we, we talked about archiving them for five years?
Yes.
And so that's, we can change that to five too?
Yes.
Okay, that was gonna be mine. I wanted five.
My last question, are you, are you gonna store those locally, or are you gonna put those on the Swag It, Snag It?
They'll be stored locally on our website.
Okay.
At some point.
Do you have enough space for those?
Well, we have a considerable amount of storage space for communications.
Okay.
Just because of the amount of video and photo that we use, but we'll work with IT to look at that and make sure that we're not.
If you get close, let us know.
Right.
So we can get you some.
At some point, we've got to bring the Swag It contract back. I mean, that was done four or five years ago. I mean, it had, we haven't looked at Swag It contract that I know of.
Are we using, are we using these cameras to do that?
Yes, and we are able to do those internally without Swag It running the meeting, so it, it's just a recording of the meeting itself, including video, including video and audio.
It doesn't do the zooming in and banning like.
Correct, correct.
Swag It, the only thing with Swag It, it allows us to zoom in on one person talking.
Yes, correct.
I was just curious if that is their equipment or not. I know they installed it, so is it, is it their equipment?
It, it's our equipment. They have a software system that's tied to it, that they can then access it.
Perfect.
I guess we talked about I, that we would update that to be, or no, we said we weren't gonna update that.
I?
The actual Open Meeting Act. We said we'd wait, and if changes happened with that, give us a reason to come back, right?
That needs to match.
It needs to match state law.
State law.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that really, we don't have a lot of say in that. That's whatever was the state law.
Right, no, I mean, we had discussed about make it to where it automatically updated on its own, but we're not gonna put that in there, right? We're just gonna keep it, whatever the law is as of today, and at some point, if it changes, we can come back and change it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Page eleven? Page twelve? Page thirteen? Page fourteen? Page fifteen? Nobody speaks up, I'm assuming everybody's okay with those. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Page sixteen? Page seventeen? It's a good thing this is a hundred-page document.
My pages are not coming up very quick. So page seventeen is, is what?
General law and season documents?
Five D?
So five, six?
Yes. Five A, five B, five C.
Five A, yeah, communication section.
I'm there.
Eighteen? Page nineteen?
Eighteen does have the change to comply with state law by specifying the sec, city secretary's office will request an attorney, uh, will request an opinion from the attorney general's office within the deadlines provided by the Texas Public Information Act. It previously said, eh, the city official must request an opinion.
What, the state law says secretary? That's what, okay.
I just had one question. Is there a high percentage of requests that go to the AG or for that being in here? Do we know?
It depends, it depends on what's going on, because at times, when there've been economic development deals going on, we get lots of requests for information, like drafts of contracts or amounts that might be considered to be offered to purchase real property. It, it just depends on the time. We're, we're trying to be as compliant as we can without hurting the city.
So if, if a land transaction occurred and deeds changed names, at that point, there'd be no reason to have that be an item. It would be open for public, because at that point, it's, transaction's over.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and in fact, we've done that. There was an instance, it wasn't city, it was EDC that was buying land, while the transaction, until we could complete the transaction, we objected to producing the items. After the transaction had closed, we turned over the, the contracts and dismissed the lawsuit.
Okay.
We do have a fairly high percentage, just because the AG requires us, if there's something that needs to be withheld or is not subject to disclosure, we're required by law to ask the AG that, even if the law states it.
The reason I ask that is, you know, I brought this up before. It seems to me, when I talk to some people out, and I, I don't know honestly, without seeing a list, which I haven't seen, who the habitual quester is, but sometimes there's a, there may be an opinion that if you ask for something, it's gotta go to the AG before you can get the information, whatever that information may be. And as long as we're following the law. whatever that information may be, and as long as we're following the law, it is what it is.
Okay. Page nineteen.
Okay, that brings, that brings us to council member requests for documents. This is another issue that came up at the city council retreat. I sent all the c-, city council a memo last night outlining what the law is. I prepared a PowerPoint, which I don't know if we have it up lacy, but let me, just for ease of reference, I've got copies of the PowerPoint for every member of the city council. This is nothing fancy, because I did it myself, so. There's no cool graphics, sorry. And here, I'll go ahead and get started. The, the starting point is that there are, and members of the council have found, some of the attorney general opinions, in which the attorney general has said, "Any member of a ruling body has," and I'm quoting now, "an inherent right to access to the records of that body when requested in the member's official capacity." That goes all the way back to Jim Maddox. It, uh, there's even one that was issued in 2015 to Regent Hall. The attorney general's opinion is, it doesn't matter what the record is. It doesn't matter what it relates to. If you ask for it in your official capacity, you get it, okay? What does that mean? That means any member of this council, if the attorney general's opinion is, in fact, the law, any member of this city council can walk into the HR department and say, "I'd start to, I'd like to start at, at, at A and go through Z and look at every personnel file of everybody who's ever worked here." Means anybody can walk over into the police department and say, "I'd just kind of like to look through the pending investigative matters, or matters that have been closed, or matters involving juveniles." That's what the AG's opinion meant, and.
Open being everything is, as of the last AG opinion you're talking about, open being open.
Meaning there was no limit, there was no limit.
No limit.
And that is what led to, if we'll go to the next, uh, next, um, thing. That's what led to a case by the name of Hall versus McRaven. Hall was a Texas regent, a Texas system regent. He had, he sought documents related to the admissions of students at the University of Texas. Chancellor McRaven denied him access to the files. And the quotes you see here are right out of the Supreme Court's opinion. Regent Hall asserts that as a regent, he possesses an inherent right under Texas law, as outlined by the opinions of the attorney general, to access records pertinent to his duties. He went on to say, and this is them quoting his brief, "He claims an unfettered right to access, one free from limits other than disclosure," Hall, which means he couldn't disclose it to anyone else. He argues further that legal restrictions for the release of information, there was a specific statute applicable in that case. It's under federal law, uh, privacy of students, is categorically inapplicable to a regent's request for information he finds necessary to fulfill his job. Hall's position was simple. If I want it, you got to give it to me. I don't care what it is, just turn it over. Now.
But let's clarify that all those files would be given to a special investigation report by the previous chancellor, where they investigated the allegations, so they had given all of those files to someone else. Then when the regent wanted to double-check the files, that's when the new Chancellor McRaven rejected his access based on FERPA and other rules. So those files hadn't been restricted from everyone. They had been given away to a special investigative group prior to that.
You're right. UT System had engaged an outside firm to do an investigation. And just like their general counsel, that group got full access and produced a report. You're absolutely right. The report was made public. The underlying documents were not.
Were restricted, which is what Hall was going after.
That's what Hall wanted. Now, what the, what the, um, the lawsuit gets filed, because Hall asserts McRaven has no legal authority denying him access to the documents. What happened was, originally, when Hall makes his first request, the regents had a rule that said, if you ask for something and the chancellor doesn't give it to you, come back to the group as a whole, and if two regents say, you get the documents, you get the documents.
Now, as I read, as I read the court case, it seemed that that was brought up because of the FERPA Act, and because they were dealing with federal money, there was different restrictions on personal records of students. And so from what I read, the board, based on that federal issue, imposes this rule, if you will, and that's where they were at. And then from there, the lawsuit was that the chancellor was acting outside of his capacity because he was not releasing the documents. And the way I read it, long story short, what I read from the court is, because the board gave the chancellor the ability to limit, then by suing the chancellor, the chancellor didn't, I don't know how you say it, ultra-viruses? The chancellor was not violating that, and so therefore, case closed. Because if you had an issue, take it up to the board, not to the actual chancellor, because the board, the chancellor's only dealing with the board's set. Is that correct?
It's partially correct. Let me explain.
Okay.
So, and, and let me jump back in facts, and then I'll get to the specific point you raised. When Hall makes his first request, they had a rule in place that said, if you don't get the documents you want, come back, and if any two of us say you get them, then you get them. Hall made a request. They then revised their rules to say, if you request and you don't get what you want, then a majority of us can reverse the chancellor. Then Hall takes another step and says, no, I want everything. I don't want anything held back. At that point, the UT System did this, because it was actually on McRaven's suggestion. McRaven said, look, when you ask for documents, I'll give you anything that, that's not privileged, okay? Then if you come back and tell me there's a legitimate reason why you need it, I'll gen-, I'll sit down with our general counsel, and we'll decide if that's legitimate. The system then adopted a rule that empowered McRaven to be the final arbiter. Now, to get to your question.
Do we have a rule, do we have a rule like that, right now, here?
We have not to this point. And I'll explain that in a second. Let me, let me answer your question. Two, two issues before the court. Remember, Hall is saying McRaven has no power and no authority, okay? So the first question the Supreme Court has to address is, could the UT regents really empower McRaven to make this decision? The second issue is, did McRaven either act ultra-viruses or, or have no choice in the matter, all right? This, the Supreme Court's opinion starts out, and I think it may be on the next page of the, of the PowerPoint, but the UT regent, the UT Supreme, University of Texas Supreme Court, starts its opinion by saying that the issue is, does a regent have an inherent right to access information? If so, how unfettered is that right? It then goes on to address this. It says, "The court began by determining the UT System could legally empower McRaven to determine access to documents." It points out, "The legislature empowered them to make their rules," all right? And it goes on to say, "Those, those rules include the, the power to delegate the authority of the board to a committee or an employee." Go to the next one, if you would, please. The court then concludes, "The regents' rules have the same effect as if they were, any rule passed by the regents has the same effect as if passed by the legislature." And they conclude, UT System empowered McRaven. McRaven has the legal authority to determine whether Hall gets the documents or not. That takes us, if you'll.
But one second, so on that, but they didn't state whether the Board of Regents could restrict their own rights to accessing those documents. They purely said, because they gave Hall the authority, or McRaven the authority to withhold them, that they weren't ruling on whether that piece was legal, because they said they could have come back and sued the board itself in ultra-virus and not, and not McRaven.
That's where I'm getting at, because they, I mean, it says in their court case, these are concrete limits, and Hall's claimed right to complete access, but they are limits imposed by the board, not McRaven. Hall did not explicitly challenge these rules in his ultra-virus suit. Nor could he, by suing McRaven alone, by its very definition, an ultra-virus suit against McRaven can only seek to compel him to follow his government authority, not change the government authority. And it goes on, and that's where I'm getting the impression that they're suing the chancellor for breaking rules or laws, and the reality of it is, is what the court, what I see the court saying is that you sue the chancellor, and he didn't break ultra-viruses, and because he didn't break ultra-viruses, therefore, you lose the lawsuit, because they go on to talk about how it's very, um, what is the exact quote they used in here? They have a quote where they say, um, where the hell is that? They're not real, uh, I'll find it here.
Okay, let's take a step back. They first say, all right, the board has vested its power in McRaven, and McRaven has that power under Texas law. The predicate is, the board had to have that power to restrict access before it could empower McRaven. The UT Board of Regents couldn't give McRaven any power it didn't already have. That's why they spend so much time talking about, they have the power to make rules. They even have the power to give their authority to someone else. That's the starting point. You are correct. This case turns on, on release under federal law. But that's because, and, and this is true of every court case. The court has to decide it on the facts before it. It doesn't get to decide it and offer advisory opinions, saying, everybody else, this is how we would decide other cases. They specifically reference the attorney general opinion that Hall got from the current attorney general, saying, "I have an inherent right to access to documents." And they say, no, you can legally be restricted. Now, the predicate basis of saying that you can be restricted is their ability to make rules. And that's the same as under your charter. Your charter expressly provides, the city can make its own rules, and it allows the city council to, shall have its own rules and order of business. You have the authority to make rules. Now, that takes us to where we were at the retreat.
So where it stands now, before anything's voted on, as I ask for documents, do I have unlimited access to request what I want, when I want, and it can't be challenged?
The city council's protocol, as we discussed at the retreat, so for the last several years, has been, if you ask for documents, the city manager determines whether it would be a, against the city's interest to release actual copies of those documents to city council members.
That's not what I asked. I asked right now, with no vote, no rules, do I have access to all the documents when I request them? Because that protocol's not written, not voted on. So as it stands right now, if I request any document, do I have access? Yes or no?
No, because the council has a protocol. The fact that it's not written doesn't mean it's, it's not enforceable. It's the practice of this council to follow them.
So is it voted on?
It's been the practice of the council.
That's not what I asked. Was it voted on?
I have no idea. I don't believe it was.
So then how are we enforcing something that's not written down for this council to review and has no vote? How are we saying that's an enforceable protocol?
It's the same situation Mr. Hall found himself in.
No, it's not. Hall had, they had a written law that said, the rule was, McRaven could restrict access.
No, no. Hall's first request, Hall's first request came when he either got them or he got two members of the regents to vote with him.
So do we have that rule that says we need two, two, two members to vote with us? Do we have that rule?
That's why, that's why we're here tonight.
That's not, I'm asking if the rule exists right now, not why we're here. Does it exist?
Okay, can I, can I just finish?
Let me, let me.
Let me, let me finish.
Let me, let me kind of respond here. It's been explained, yes, there was a practice, there was no written, no council vote. So there wasn't, but from this point forward, that's why we brought this council protocol, saying, okay, from this point forward, because we can't change the past. So going forward here, this is why we're sitting here in this meeting, looking at this. We have a recommendation that, after we discussed it at the council retreat, this is the council protocol that we want to go, follow going forward.
Who wants to go with?
Well, that's, this is what's been.
Who's we?
Hold on, let me, let me finish. Let me finish. This is what we discussed, to have the city manager or the city attorney draft up. It's back before us. It's not been approved. It's for us to review tonight, discuss, make any changes. We can talk about it, make any changes we want to make, and we can come to a decision that which one we want to go forward with. So here, rather than, there's no sense in spending, I mean.
Yes, there's a sense in spending all this time.
I understand all this past, but what is our protocol that we want to follow from this day forward on how to handle documents?
And I'm trying to understand where we are right now.
And we could, we've answered that question for you three times.
What, with no written protocol, so you can restrict documents with no written protocol and no voted on? How is that restrictive?
We have operated under a practice. Yes, there has not been a vote on it. That's why we're putting it in the, and that's typical, is as you kind of go through these things, this product, council protocol is a working document that continues to come back, and, and you can see it's been revised several times. We've got changes we've brought up.
It's typical to operate on rules with no written down, nothing voted on? That's how we operate?
But at this point, I want to trip, I, we need to take the direction of the discussion is, take this document, this proposal is here, is there changes that we want to make to this proposal that we want to have go back and develop a protocol to go forward?
Yeah, we want to strike the whole thing.
And what are you going to use as a written protocol going forward?
The written protocol is, why would I give away my access to gather information and get documents that I want to do my job up here? Why would I give that away?
We're not giving it away. We're just saying, this is the how, the process of how to get those documents.
But right now, we decide what documents we get. We're giving it away to the city manager to decide what documents we get.
No, you're not. You're not. Under the, under the draft protocol, if the city manager, in three business days, to determine it's, it's contrary to the state, the city's interest, to give you a copy of it, he notifies you, and he notifies the council as a whole. If you're displeased or unhappy for any reason with his determination, you just bring the matter to the council, and if you get a majority vote, you get the documents.
The city manager's not an elected official. Why is he deciding what's adverse to the city and not us up, sitting up here? Why is that his role?
It's, it's the same issue that Hall ran into.
No, it's not.
Yes, yes, it is.
No, it's not. There was already a rule in place that they could restrict it. We don't have that rule, so saying that it's the same, that's not true.
Okay, if I might.
Mayor, could I have you recognized?
Yes.
Councilman Tanner Rose, I would appreciate it if you'd let him answer the question. Instead of being argumentative, I would appreciate it if we could have a civil conversation up here, together, as seven individuals who ultimately will make a decision as a body. So I think the more we delve into arguing, and the more we delve into this, it's not getting us anywhere. So if we could, I would just like to remind all of us, if we could be respectful, let people answer their questions, and then we can have opportunities to respond. That's what I would ask.
So we have before us a recommendation of how to process, how, when we discussed at the council retreat, there was input, and we had several discussions. At this point, you can take that stock, this process, if there's a lot of changes you want to recommend to it, let's have the discussion of what, what do we do for the council protocol for getting documents going forward?
I still don't know where we are right now. I still haven't gotten a real answer that, can I get all the documents I want now or not? There's no written protocol, so I don't even know where we are.
You, you've been answered.
That there's no written protocol and nothing voted on, so that that's the protocol then? That's how we?
It's a practice that's been in place since the Home Rule Charter was, was put in. I'm sorry that this council didn't catch it yesterday, but there are certain documents, proprietary information, certain inherent, uh, rules that we have put in place with the city manager. When we approve a project, these businesses don't want all their proprietary information out there for the world to see.
I didn't say it's going out. When I requested it in my official capacity, it's not public record.
And this is what it says. You can contact the city manager, make an appointment with him, either see it in his office with him, or you can go back into executive session, and we will have them available where we can look at them.
No, it says he can reject my request, which, as it stands right now, he can't reject it because there's no written protocol. So what's the state law for no protocol, no vote? If I ask for documents as a man, a member of a governing body, do I get them or not?
May I answer?
Yes.
Okay, the starting point is that the city manager has indicated, and it's been his practice, that when someone asks for information related to an ongoing project, that if he is uncomfortable giving copies, he will certainly share copies to be reviewed in executive session. And we're doing that tonight. Now, number two, per the Texas Supreme Court's ruling, elected officials and governing, members of governing bodies don't have an inherent right to review everything. That's the law after Hall versus McRaven.
Based on FERPA, though.
I was going to say.
No, it, it, it wouldn't have mattered if it was FERPA or something else. The question is, do you have the right, let's just put it this way. Do you have the right to walk into the, the, uh, police department and say, hey, I just want to start going through all of your investigative files?
As I see it, yeah, right now.
Okay, and that's why you...
Not saying I want to or need to, but...
But that's the problem, Councilmember Rose. If you really have that unfettered discretion, you can walk into HR right now and start going through everybody's personnel files just to find information that might be helpful to you for some reason that has no legitimate purpose. The whole focus, the entire focus of UT's defense of, of McCraven was this. If you can articulate a legitimate reason for needing the protected information that's being withheld from you, articulate it. Explain it to McCraven, let me just finish. Explain it to McCraven and explain it to the general counsel. If you have that legitimate reason, just come forward with it. No one's saying you can't have documents. It's just, make a request. If the, if the city manager says, "I don't feel comfortable releasing a copy to you," then come to the council as a whole and articulate your reason.
But their stance is, they're not, they're redacting information based on FERPA. So if you want the information based on redacted version of FERPA, that's why it's being withheld. What's the state law that says you can withhold EDC documents or ongoing contracts with companies? Where's the federal statute or law that says, "I can't have those because they're protected"? I'm not asking for HIPAA or other things.
The Public Information Act limits...
Not when I ask in, not when I ask in an official capacity. I'm not asking to release it to the public. I'm asking to review it in private where I'm still managed by the penal code.
There's lots of, there's a release of lots of information that's adverse to this city's interests.
Who decides that though?
This council, wait, hold on. This council is, if you adopt this policy, it's this council as a whole.
But it's not adopted yet, that's my point.
That wasn't the rule, wait, can I just finish? That wasn't the rule when Hall made his first request either.
Yes, it was. The Regent Rule existed. The Regent Rule existed.
It did, and guess what? Hall showed up and he had two Regents say, "Give him the documents." And the rest of the Regents said, "No, it's not in their best interest. We'll change the law now."
Okay, but the rule still existed that gave McCraven the authority to withhold it. We don't have that right now. So you're comparing apples to...
Yes, you do.
Where? Where is that written down that you can provide that document that says, "I can't have that"?
That's why we're here this evening.
No, we're here for the future, not for where we are right now.
I think the majority of the council has expressed that that's been the practice of this council for several years.
And what we're looking at is adopting a protocol going forward.
So we're running on anarchy and chaos with no written rules?
So, can we put our focus on determining this document before us? Is it changes to this document for going forward of how we're going to handle document release? Is there changes within here that somebody wants to recommend so they can go back and bring it back to us again before our next meeting for approval?
Yeah, I want to remove the whole thing because I don't want to give away my access to documents to the city manager.
That's one opinion. Now we've got others...
So, the only thing I would add is, is I understand how we're getting here. I understand the difference in the past and future. I strongly disagree with the court case because we're referencing a lot of advice that we have the right to do something based on this court case. And I think what, what I got out of it was, I was trying to explain is that the only reason Hall lost was because essentially who he sued. And the last page of their opinion, it says, "We're not unsympathetic to Hall's plight, however. He seeks information to educate himself and his fellow Regents about issues of undeniable importance to institution. Facts are the greatest ally of those like Hall who seek to change the minds of others. Yet the board has instituted a governance structure that leaves Hall at the mercy of the chancellor's discretionary legal determination, at least in the first instance. Perhaps that scheme is unwise, perhaps it elevates the status quo above transparency, perhaps it increases the likelihood that voices in a minority will be stifled. Perhaps it releases, or presents none of those dangers, but those questions are beyond our reach. The legislature is the ultimate arbiter of policy at the University of Texas, and this suit, we're simply tasked with assessing whether Chancellor McCraven exceeded his authority. And on this record, we conclude he did not." And that's what I'm getting at. They are saying the only reason that Hall lost was because the, the whole court case you're, you're referencing has nothing to do with keeping records open or closed. It's all about, "Did McCraven do the ultra vires?" And that's where I think it's the information we're getting. And I'd finish it with this. Whether this passes or not, if I wanted a document, going forward, I could just make a motion. I'd like to see the term sheet to project expansion and for, in the next executive session. And if it gets seconded, then the next week, we're going to have it in there.
If, if we have a term sheet, that's fine.
It's not a majority vote on motions. To get something on the agenda...
Oh, to get it on the agenda, yeah.
...by law, and so, and that's, honestly, that's why we're meeting.
Okay.
I just feel like, if something is being abused, if there's a policy being abused, I have no problem us sitting up here and trying to limit and, and stop an abuse. But I do feel like there's suspected abuses and people, you know, there's this fear we're going to go in and check every ticket everybody had, and we're going to spend our time doing that, we're going to hire people, and so we're already trying to limit the ability to do your job when right now, there's been, as I know, two big requests. Documents on the co-op, which have not been provided due to some reasoning, and documents on project expansion, which at this point, the documents, we've seen slide shows, we've heard a lot of verbalness, but as we remember at the council retreat, it was made very clear, we're not getting the documents, term sheet, from project expansion. And the whole point I had in this whole, the whole dog I have in this fight is, I don't know how to make a decision if the people in the front row, how good of people they are because hearing something verbal and seeing it on paper is two different things. And I think that's what maybe Councilman Rose is really trying to push here. It's not that we want to see people's, you know, dental records and their health insurance records and go through and see how every investigation that the chief of police is doing. It's more major projects coming to the city and us expected to take votes on verbal.
But I'm pretty sure that if you have some companies that don't want anybody but the city manager seeing their financials, their proprietary information, it doesn't matter if you're a council person or not, they want their information protected.
Then how would I, how would we make a decision if we can't see it?
Because we will get the information from the city manager after he has been...
It's a council discussion. I mean, we need to, council...
And he's part of, he can be part of the council discussion.
Mayor, members of council, listen. There's been two statements that's just flat and accurate.
Let me, can I confirm one that I got? I did get my documents.
Mayor, the documents as it relates to the co-op have been provided as requested. Those are executed documents.
Okay.
The second is that, remember, I have inherent responsibility outlined in the charter not to violating federal, state, or laws. And if I have members of councils, particularly here, I just want to highlight this, when it relates to my police department, because this is really important. We have ongoing investigations, we got all sorts of things. I mean, I've got undercover guys out there working right now. So, I want to make it really clear about that. I am not giving you documents that could expose the life and safety of my officers. That's not happening. Uh, and I'm not also too going to provide you with documents that would require me to break the law. Citizens in this city have a right of innocence until proven guilty. And when there's an investigation going on, they deserve to have the right to have a legal, fair, unambiguous process for the prosecution of those items. So, I just want to make sure, I state there for the record, because, well, I know there's a happy debate going on. Uh, my police department have a responsibility to keep people safe, but they also have a responsibility to make sure that citizens maintain their federal, federal state, particularly constitutional rights, uh, to a fair trial. And we take that stuff very seriously.
I don't mind putting...
Can I ask the city attorney, can I ask the city attorney one question? And I'll let you answer. If I request documents in an official capacity, which is beyond, sort of beyond, the Public Information Act and the open records request and those things, I'm still governed by the penal code of keeping those documents private. The, just because I request it in an official capacity, doesn't mean those, those financials, those police reports, not that I want police reports, all those documents that are already privileged, protected other, other rules, I'm not allowed to go walk out to the public and say, "Hey, here's these financial, here's these things." I'm still governed by the local government code that says, "Those protected documents are still protected." They're not all of a sudden open for release from, for public information.
You are obligated by state law to keep confidential anything you get in your official capacity.
Correct.
Now, we all know that doesn't happen, but you are obligated. Number two, there are instances under state law and under federal law where you're not even entitled to see the information. That was the whole, wait, let me just finish. That was the whole issue in Hall versus McCraven. Now, you're absolutely right, council member, that at the end, the issue is, "Did McCraven act in an ultra vires manner?" But the predicate is, first of all, did McCraven have the authority to make the determination on whether, did McCraven have the authority to make the decision on whether Hall even got the documents? Because if he doesn't have that lawful authority, then he was acting illegally. Okay?
I agree with you there. It's, again, it's, that wasn't, that wasn't actually the question in front of the court.
That was the predicate first question. It had to be the first question. Otherwise, he was acting illegally and Hall would have prevailed.
So, so are you okay not having access to police records?
Mayor, also too, let me, let me also raise one issue with you as well, members of council. Understand that I am also governed to not release business owners' tax returns.
You can add that in there too.
So, so, you know, it's not as easy to be flippant and make these rules. Uh, you know, I'm required as the manager, and you can't ask me to do something that violates a federal, state law.
Not continuing.
And those things, uh, when it gets to proprietary information, tax returns, there, there's a whole lot involved. And it sends chills up the spines of the investment community just to hear us having this conversation.
You know, it sends chills up...
Because, Mayor...
The public.
If folks are providing that information, they don't want to read about their tax returns. They don't want to read about their proprietary information that belongs to their company so that their competitors can take advantage of that.
And while I care about the investors, I just care about the people I represent.
I just ask for y'all to, as a body, to consider that while you're deliberating on that, along with the other items.
So let me summarize whatever, what I think where we're at is, I think, I mean, I think everybody up here on the dais wants access to the documents that they need to make the decisions at the right time, be able to see the documents so they can understand. Nobody here has said they don't want access to the documents to be able to make the decision. I think the concern that's been raised, and I think it's a very valid concern, is there is some protection, we need to have some protection, and maybe this, this document needs to be reworded a little bit differently because you don't, like you said, you don't want to get the police investigating. There are certain areas where we don't want to have specific areas of access to. And I think the intention of this was to kind of put a protection in there of, okay, is this meet the, having, by saying, because quite frankly, if you say, "I could get access to every document," legally, if you, if we go that route and you say that, that means basically I could send a message to the same manager saying, "Give me all those investigations, and if there's nothing in there, then he's got to release them."
I don't think you have a debate on that.
So, I think...
The difficulty is...
So the question, and I, and we need to hear from more than just, I think we've heard from one, two council members. I want to hear where the rest of council members stand on this. And kind of, at what point do we kind of, the whole point of developing council protocols, what, this is how we agree, seven officers are going to act, so we can all have, make sure we got the documentation, we've got the information we need to make the decision we need to make.
And the proposed protocol is on the screen if y'all have not looked at it.
So I think as it's written, it gives the, everybody, every one of us the opportunity to ask for any document that we want, but it also gives the city manager and our city attorney the time to make sure that it's not going to break any laws or put anybody in jeopardy.
I agree. And then following, if for some reason there is a denial, there is a process to...
To appeal it to the council, which I agree with.
Why would you give away your right?
Let, let, I want to, in respect, I want to let the rest of council members have their opportunity to have their say and voice.
Can I be recognized?
Yes.
So, you know, my, my thoughts on this are, and particularly speaking to council member Snyder or council member Tanner Rose, we have three sets of new eyes up here that are experiencing all this brand new. And we are here bringing things that we see that we would like changed. I think that's a good thing. Councilmember Tanner Rose has brought up some excellent points. I don't know why it was never written down. I wish it was. If I was here three years ago, it probably would have been because people know how OCD I am on some of this kind of stuff. And so, I think it's good that we are here having this conversation. This is not a bad thing. This is an excellent thing because we've, we've seen something that needs to be fixed and we are here in the process of fixing it. And where we're trying to get to is, how do we do that? How do we do something that makes us all happy? Uh, because personally, I don't think any member of this council up here wants to see police records. I don't see, I don't think any of us wants to see private financial documents and all this kind of stuff, right?
But you could have a council member feature it.
But, but, right, and that's kind of goes, harkens back to my initial comment when we first started this conversation, was we need to create a policy that is, that doesn't care who sits in the seat. The policy has to be applicable to no matter who is here. And there could be a council member who comes up here and says, "Yeah, I want to see everything." And you wrote a policy because you wanted to have certain specific documents and this lets me go, go to town and I can get whatever I want. And so my concern is, let's write a policy that's applicable to no matter who's here. We, we take ourselves, we take personality out of it, and we move forward. Now, with that said, I am all for transparency. I am all for getting the information that we need in order to make good decisions. That's what I want. One of my recommendations in here would be to add a third option here where it says, "Request a documentation, either the city manager provides it or provides a reason why he doesn't provide it, and then he says you, he can be overwritten by a majority of the council." Um, we have talked in other venues about a third option, which is, we can go, if, if city manager's uncomfortable giving us written documentation, that we can receive whatever we want in executive session. And he will bring anything in at any given timeframe, no matter where it's at, if it's in early draft stage or if it's near final draft stage. And I've heard city manager say that.
Yeah, in fact, that, council member, that, that has been my policy. And I, I have advised this council before, not only on matters related to economic development, but where and when I could, I've also provided council members with an update on some items related to the police, for example.
Sure.
We, we've had those executive sessions before where information is held in conference. So, um, you know, my suggestion to you is maintaining that is the general practice of a council manager, form of government, is to, you know, any time that you all wanted to see something, since I've been here, we just put it on an executive session, agenda item, if it's confidential, and we discuss it, subject to the rules, uh, that's provided to us.
And for the record, whoever ever had a problem getting documents...
By Public Information Act. Uh, so, um, that has been the practice. And, you know, I would encourage you to continue that.
Because my, I mean, my main thing is, you know, what I don't want is the council to be micromanaging our city manager and to be second guessing every little thing. I know that there are a lot of iterations of things that come up. I think probably the biggest crux of this whole thing we experienced last week when there was, there was some concern over whether we were comfortable allowing the city manager to execute things that we hadn't finally reviewed, right?
Wait, here's where it happened, is because at the council retreat, the city manager made very clear, nothing has been executed. And he will, he said, "I will not execute anything until I come back before the council. And at such a point as you all review it, then I'll execute it." So I made a motion based on what the city manager made very clear to me in that public meeting in San Antonio. And then all hell broke loose because I'm going rogue and the deal's going to collapse because he has to sign documents. And, city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, if we sign a contract, because in the business that I'm in, every contract I sign has to have a corporate approval and most of the people I do business with have an approval. But as a city, if we sign a document, let's say, we agree to pay someone $300,000 a year, um, and that, we sign it and the document's good. And then that comes and now we're going to go sell bonds or something. And that comes to the council and we then decide, that's not, that's not what we... And that comes to the council, and we then decide, that's not, that's not what we were thinking. Is it not too late because we've given the city manager the authority? And that's where I'm going with this, is, is once he has the authority to sign documents, are we not legally bound as a city to follow those documents?
So, so-
Well, wait, it's going to depend.
So, Mayor, members of council, let me, let me, for the record, look, what I said was that we were still negotiating-
Be very careful here, because I, I wrote down every word to the letter you said.
We were negotiating current arrangements. And what our city attorney advised me is that the current arrangements, as they are being negotiated, are not legally binding, by no executed documents. These documents change often and regularly. And, you know, so I was acting upon advice and have been of our city attorney, Mr. Bigum, who, in review of the request, made it clear to me that he didn't consider those, those documents as being binding as they were being, currently being negotiated. In other words, if I send you, we're negotiating a deal, and I send you a document, Peter, and you execute it, but you're negotiating with Patty, and in five minutes, you know, you and Patty talk on the phone, and you'll make a change to the document. That's not really legally binding because you're still negotiating a backwards and forwards document. And so, these, these are very complicated matters. And so, it's easy for someone to stand from the cheap seats and throw popcorn and scream bloody murder. But when you're actually trying to get these things done, it's important, and I've always done this, is to rely upon the advice of the city attorney. And here, and frankly, throughout this process, I've done effectively that.
And it's my understanding that the standard practice has been to have a term sheet where the city council is apprised of what the terms of the deal are. The city council determines what your bounds are, the bounds of the city manager that says, here's what we're comfortable with. You can't go outside of these bounds. Anything within these bounds, we are comfortable with you negotiating and executing. As long as you stay within these bounds, we are fine. And the bounds are clearly determined, and the bounds are laid out. And so, they're basically not relinquishing any command of what they can do. They're not giving over any authority that, that they don't have. Because they're basically saying, look, if you stay within these bounds, then we're fine. We're fine with it.
Have you seen this term sheet?
That's effective.
So, so not yet. But what I'm saying is, if we, if we can put, that's kind of what I want to put in this, in here, right? Is where we can see those documents, because three of us haven't seen it, four of us have, because that term sheet was created before we're here.
Say that again, because it's a common misconception that I've been given documents, and I keep telling people, I'm not lying, I haven't seen it, but you have not seen a term sheet either?
No, I haven't. And, and I've told publicly, people have asked me publicly if I've seen it. I said, no, that's the purpose of the job. Let me clean it.
And like I said last week, I'm completely in favor of the perfect game. The, the whole development, it, it seems like an awesome, awesome plan.
We're getting slightly off topic.
We get worried about other people, and as my job, I have to worry about the city. And the decisions that I make today, someone's going to come back in 10 years and hold me accountable, just like the majority of people, every time they get their water bill, what do they say? Oh, that previous council, they got me. Again-
Okay, so, that actually, wait, Tanner, hold on.
Just for the record, Mayor, I have provided council the opportunity to review documents in executive session. I think that's the point that Councilman McGordon was, was making.
So-
Including the last meeting where I asked if you all, when we went into executive session, if you all had additional questions. And historically, I've always done that.
So, so the agenda item is reviewing the council protocol.
Exactly.
Let me, let me bring back, let me bring back to where we're at. We're on this page where we've got the councilman requests for documents. Again, at this point, we're, all we're doing is passing a resolution to direct the city staff to go back and make any changes. And it'll come back to us next week for final approval. Is there any changes that you want to see here, other than, I mean, we've heard that, we've heard one, one say take it completely out. The other one say adding executive, adding the, the third item of reviewing documents in executive session. The only thing I would add in here is that if a document is provided to one council member, that it should be provided to all council members?
It does say that. It does say that.
Okay.
I'm okay if it limits to police, police records, personal employee records, IRS records, and somebody adding-
The, the problem is, you don't-
You open Pandera's box, then. The, the city manager should know what is legal and what is not legal.
Well, to date, we haven't got a term sheet, and that would be legal. And so, you have seen this term sheet, and I assume Councilman Rose has. But see, that's my whole problem with this policy, is I have not seen these things I hear about, and they're magical because they're out there. But yet, I, I don't see them, and I'm not allowed to. And I'm told, you're not going to get them. And then we come back a week later, and we go, well, everybody's, everybody knows the details. They know it. And I'm like, no. And so, I'm okay limiting. If you have a fear about IRS, I'm okay limiting that. Personal records, that's great, because that's not what, I'm, I'm not interested in the day-to-day operations of the city. I'm interested in the borrowing of money to facilitate economic development. I'm concerned about buying land with city dollars, and then how we, what we do with that land. Do we give it to people, lease it to people, sell it to people? Those are the details I'm interested in. And so, all this other stuff, I have no problem limiting. It's just when it comes to, why are my taxes going up? No one, no one's wondering about the dental records of an employee. What they're wondering is, is where do we spend the money on the land at? What happened? And I got to be able to say, when I voted for all this, it, it made sense. I cannot say, and, and then you're going to force me to vote no on every project until I see the financial part of it, which I'm being told you can't see until we're going to go out the bonds and the deal's done.
Councilman, Councilmember Snyder-
Yes, sir.
In the last executive session, I looked you in the eye and asked you if you had any additional questions. And I had all the documents on the table.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Hold on.
Are we allowed to talk about executive session?
No, let's go down that path.
Let me get back on the agenda item.
I'm ready.
Is there any more? We've heard several things. I think the lawyers-
Mayor, here's the, I think, just as a, as an operational matter, I think the opening question is, does the council want some type of protocol like this? Then it might be good, if you want a protocol like this, to take up some of the suggested revisions.
So, you say, is there a question for a protocol?
A protocol like this. It is, it, does a majority want a protocol like this?
Okay. One last question, and I swear to God, I rest. That is, the very last sentence says, so, once we appeal the city manager's decision, the city council as a whole, it can be taken up at a city council meeting. So, I guess a motion has to be made. I'd like to, this on the agenda next week to get, to have a vote on this.
Yeah.
Okay? And then considering of any appeal, the city council can go into executive session to the extent allowed by the Texas Public Information Act.
Sorry. Texas Public Information Act.
Well, by that side, my fear is, it's in consideration, it's to the extent allowed. So, I, I, I don't know, some of the documents that have been asked for may not fall in executive session privilege.
You need a definition of extent allowed.
Well, not to say a definition, because I mean, it's what's allowed in public, in the Open Meetings Act, but whatever. If it doesn't fall into those executive session bullets, then what do we do? Because there may be a document that we asked for, and it's, it's not a legal matter. It's not a proprietary financial matter. For instance, you know, I, maybe I do want a personal record for some reason of somebody, and I can go to executive session that, and that's fine. We're not breaking the law. But if there's an item, how do we address the item that we're asking for that doesn't fall into executive session?
So, you're making, or so are you suggesting that maybe it should say, the council can go into executive session, or-
As necessary.
Or, I don't want to say require, I guess requires the right word, is require the city manager to release that document to all council members.
I would, something to that effect, where, um-
I mean, basically, if we as a majority say, he has to release it, then as long as it's not illegal, and that's, or we would have to, if, if somebody came, so my, my vision is, let's say he came up and said, I wanted a document, whatever document. We go through this whole, and the city manager says, no, you don't get it because of A, B, C, because that's an illegal document. Well, you say, no, I don't think it's illegal. Therefore, I'm going to bring it before the council. Council is a majority. Under the advice of the attorney, the council's going to look at the attorney and say, can we legally give this document out? And he's going to come back and say, no, because it's a personnel record, or it's an investigation, or whatever legal reason it is. Then, if the majority votes against it, then they're basically doing it something illegal. But if, if it's, if the, the advice of the council says that's not a legal document, then if, and the majority of council says, yes, it needs to be released, then it should be released.
The only thing I'd say is, it shouldn't be the majority of the council. It should be two people. Because all I have to do is make a motion to see the document in executive session and get one second, and we're going back there anyway and looking at it. And so, there's-
As long as you can see it in executive session, like your question was asked.
As long as you can. And then if it's not, then, then we would have to bring it up, but-
Well, first of all, to get the matter, to get the matter on the agenda, all you need is two votes. Are you saying it'd only take two votes to release the document?
No, two votes to go back in executive session. I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to do is, instead of sitting there going, hey, next week, can, can we, I've asked, and, and I've been told no. And so, next week, I'd like on the agenda to get a vote, and then see how that vote goes. It's just easier for me to go, next week, I'd like to have that item on executive, kind of what we're doing tonight in executive session. And I'm just saying, why go through that extra step? Just jump and go to it.
I see it as the same thing. Like, if, if you wanted, if, okay. You ask for a document, city manager says, I don't think it's in the city's best interest to release it. Then at the next meeting, you can ask and have it put on the agenda as long as you get one other vote. And then we can post it both for public action and discussion and for executive session, provided there's a basis for executive session.
And, and that's what I'm saying. Right now, we would have it on the agenda to take a vote. And then, let's say, I wanted to see the term sheet of development Bravo. And then the council says, oh, no, he's, he's trying to dig in and micromanage, and they vote me down six to one not to get that. Well, then, then I make a motion to go see it in executive session. And then I get a, a second, and we go see it anyway. I'm just saying, instead of going through all this, let's just streamline it just a little bit.
That is, I, I think that's the amendment that, that one of the other council members is proposing. That as long as there is not a contention that it violates the law to, to share it at all, that the, the provision provide that if requested, it's made available in executive session. I thought that was-
That's, yeah. Yeah. That's what I was wanting.
Right.
So, because I'm, I'm- We can, we can talk about this until midnight. So, we've got, you know, Councilor Martinez to speak. She's probably got something to say.
I agree with giving the opportunity to see it in executive session with the second, you know, just kidding. If you want, if you want to see it, if you're being denied it, we deliver it in executive session, having another vote on that. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it as written, but I, I mean, I like y'all's adjustments to it, and I, I agree it's some good changes.
Because one of the things that I, I mean, what I'm hearing, I think, is that the biggest issue about wanting to have more information is really about how we're spending the citizens' money. Am I hearing that? I think I'm hearing that loud and clear. And I want, I want that, too. I want to be able to make decisions and to be able to tell my citizens that I'm spending your money, and I'm spending it wisely. And I understand how it's being spent. In my estimation, if, and, and this will be fixed shortly tonight, but if we can, if we can see a term sheet, we're on, we're, three of us are kind of at a disadvantage because we came into a deal that's already midway through. But if we can see the bounds that have been set, and we're comfortable with that, then we can move forward. And we are all comfortable moving forward with what we have asked the city manager to do, right? And so, I don't know if we need to add some wording in here about if documents relate to the spending of, of citizens' money that, you know, that we, that we're provided them. I don't know. I mean, I get the point where if you add too much detail in here, then you, then you kind of walk yourself in, so.
What if it provided that upon request, the document shall be made available for review in executive session, provided there's not a good faith argument that the, the document is, is protected by law from examination? Would that work?
Sure.
Yeah. That, that would solve a lot for me, because then at least I can argue what law, or would we be breaking? And as you all are finding for me, someone would have to say the number and all that. And so, that helps me out a lot, because I can tell you right now, any, any restriction for me, as, as I made a comment before, it's like restricting someone on their gun rights before they've even committed a crime. Everybody goes crazy. But then here, I've been asking for the same thing. And so, if it's a by-law thing, that's fine. We can come back and have the debate if it's a law.
So, I think the lawyers got direction on what we want to bring forth back. Does that, how's that do for you?
I mean, the federal laws trump anything we do anyways. So, even if there's an IRS code, or HIPAA, or FERPA, or anything we want to do anyways, it sounds like we're kind of limited. So, you're just writing in what's already federally statute. But I guess it gives some protocol that says, as long as you can get access to documents, if there's federal statutes or state laws that trump those, you're, you're limited, which I'm okay with. But I don't like giving up my access or rights to anyone when I already have them. That's my caveat.
I think with that, we would, we would ask the city manager, and he would say, well, it doesn't break the law. And then he would then turn around and send it to the whole council.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to force the city manager to break any laws, obviously. I don't want to break any laws myself either, so.
So, I, I think that's a great, to me, that is, that is everything, that is everything I'm looking for.
And when you say it's everything you're looking for, you mean access in executive session?
Barring it's an executive session item, if for some reason I'm not able to see a document, and no one can give me the statute that it would be executive session, then right now, that would not be breaking the law, and I would expect it to be sent to me. I mean, I, what I thought we were talking about is, we would get the document, barring breaking the law. I don't think it always has to be in executive session. I mean, my God, to go back there every time you want to look at something?
I don't think it's been a problem, but, and, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I don't think it's been a problem. That the issue, it, one of the reasons that brought this up, and I don't mean to, I don't want to replow all the ground we've been through. There's instances in which the release of information can be detrimental to the city's interests, even if it's not illegal.
The release to the public, not to, I mean, there's no way you could tell me releasing the term sheet to me six weeks ago would be detrimental to the city. That'd be, that's going to be a tough argument for you to make there. Especially when you're expecting me to vote on incentives to a term sheet I've never seen or read.
That's being provided to you in executive session.
Tonight, that I've been fighting for, how long have I been on council? I mean, I shouldn't have to fight this hard to get something. It should just come.
So, so let me, Mayor, members of council, I've got to address one item. When discussing this topic with any member of this council, I have always made sure that you have had an opportunity to review all documents pertaining the, uh, deal that's in discussion, particularly the perfect game bill in executive session. I have openly said so and privately said so. And I have provided the opportunity for inspection of every document that has been asked and requested of me. And so, it's important because you've got this misinformation that's being spread out there that somehow, you know, this attorney general's opinion potentially have been violated. And just want to make it really clear that, you know, it's very important that we are careful not to implicate those things, because that's termed defamation per se. And when anyone has asked for, on this council, these documents for inspection, I've provided the opportunity for inspection and review in closed session.
So, here's my only, I just have one, just not on the policy. It's a general piece around document release. The one thing I don't like, well, I'll let people finish, then I've got to shift to something else kind of related to- then I've gotta shift to something else, kind of related to this, but slightly different.
Well, I mean, let's stick on the council protocol. I mean, basically, we've got the council protocol, we've got the documents section. I think we've got, I think we've got enough information to move forward, for the attorney to go off and rework this to something I think that can be workable, that could get passed.
What do we end up agreeing on? That we're still getting permission first to see it, and then if it doesn't break the law, we go to executive session?
Yeah.
Basically, what-
He'll, he'll take and work that-
But that's for now, until we can get this hammered out?
What it, what it-
No, that's what they're gonna hammer it into.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna take this as written, and add some of the comments that have been made, and try and bring back another document that satisfies everybody.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we wouldn't be adding, it'd be taken away. But I guess, when we go to vote on this, that'll be the-
That'll be the next discussion.
Because I think one of the other concerns that I've heard expressed is that we're asking for documents that are way too early to even see. They're still a work in progress, there's, they're not even close to being ready to execute. And I think some of the concern here is that we're just afraid that things are gonna be executed, that we haven't reviewed, and that we're gonna, we're gonna see it after it's been executed, and it's too late to change, and we've got major concerns with it, and major issues.
And we're locked in.
Yeah, and we're locked in.
Hey, to that point, Councilmember Gordon, because I know you and I spent some time talking about this, I just want to make another item clear, that any document related to this deal is subject to the approval from the council in terms of a PIT ordinance, and also a TIRS plan. Because the city council is the only authority to put in place a special assessment. And so typically, what's historically happened with these deals, like what happened at the co-op, is when the PIT ordinance was up for review, I would provide these documents for discussion. And oftentimes, we'd have several council meetings in executive session where we discussed them, prior to the actual vote on SAP. So, you know, there's just a lot of misinformation out there. I just think it's important to specify that, that this council has not authorized me to do a tax levy, or to approve a TIRS plan. So, it's just really important.
Okay.
I think that, I think the fear, Mr. City Manager, is that for some of us, our first meeting, we were told we were gonna get sued by a developer because we agreed to something, and we had to make a change, and agree to zoning changes, otherwise, we were gonna get sued. And so that's where the fear comes from, is not having ever seen those documents, it's tough to go, man, I still don't know what we agreed to on a co-op to get sued. And that was, Councilman Gordon, our first meeting was, we got a lawsuit, the city's at risk here, you have to agree to this amendment to the HUD, otherwise, we got problems. And so, it was a majority vote to approve an amendment to something I still don't know what the exact-
Are you saying that I said that?
Okay, hold, we're, we're, we're-
Are you, I'm asking that.
No, no, I said, our first meeting here was, we were-
We're drifting away from our council agenda, so.
Can I add just one thing? Go ahead.
Mayor, I was gonna say, I think I've got a sense of what the council would like.
Yeah.
And if, if it's the council's desire, we could just close this item, I won't ask for a resolution. I think I've got my direction. I will go forth, and we will revise the, the proposed changes, and bring it back next week.
Is there any other changes on these other last pages that the attorney or the city secretary needs to go back, Emily needs to go back and change?
I've got one, because it spurred my thought when we were doing all this. Not that it pertains to this. When we go back to executive session, something that frustrates me is, I kind of go back blind, because I know we can't put those documents in the packet, so I understand, because a lot of the discussion is protected in those things. But is there a way, and I'm not saying it's with this, but if we are gonna go back into executive session, is there a way that we can get some, like, a protocol or something where we can review something before we go back there? Because what I don't want to do is go back there and it be some 50-page document that I'm all of a sudden trying to read, process, understand, find my questions on the fly, while I'm sitting back in executive session. Is there a way where, if, if we know we're going back into executive session, that we can get something to pre-review it and be ready before we go back there? And I'm not saying with the access-
There's really not. I mean, unless, I mean, that's, and typically, it's information purpose. If there's something, an action item out of there, you have the right to, if you don't, if you want to digest that further, you have a right to a motion that says you want to table that action item for another, to the next meeting. But typically, you're not gonna, I mean, the whole-
You can also get in touch with the city manager, and he'll either get with you or put you in touch with one of the staff members to help you get the answers that you need, or to preview it with you before the meeting.
I hope everybody's-
So can we put something in the protocol around that, then, or?
Yeah.
So like, to what the mayor approached him, said, is there a way we can, like, protocol, some way to come in and get access to pre-review things that are, that are set for the meeting, that are in executive session? So not requesting documents just randomly, like saying, hey, project expansion's on there, or, not even that one, just in general, hey, I want to go, I don't know what Project Bravo is, is there a way I can come in and, and get a pre-review as to what's going on, so I can have some questions and some stuff already ready?
I think maybe within this, the attorney could put that, when that document is saying, you know, it says, make a request for documents and/or preview documents.
To the extent the information's available. Sometimes that information's changing the day before.
Yeah, and, yeah, I'm respectful of that. I just meant, because sometimes I don't like going back there and being blind when I walk in and saying, oh, I'm trying to, I'm trying to review packets and understand everything while everyone's back there.
Yeah, I, I just want to make it clear, the city manager and the, the staff are always, and it has always been open, available, and if you have questions, they will answer it for you. You know, you, you don't always walk out of the doors with anything in your hands, but they will answer your questions. They're very good at what they do, they've never held anything back from us, and to, to think that we make decisions up here blindly is, is, you know, insulting.
No, I didn't, I just meant I didn't, I wish I could preview them, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Rose, this protocol would also address any documents that you would ask in that same sense.
Okay.
Okay. Any other?
No.
I do have on page 21, E and F probably need to be updated to reflect, because we're doing our whole strategic guide, it's been changed the way we're doing that, and that need-
You're saying F needs to be updated?
E does. F, I think, because it says, well, FG, I mean, all that, kind of, because like Mobile Master Plan, it says coming 2017, we've already done the Mobile Master Plan.
That's been cleaned up in the, that's one of the edits that's been cleaned up in the final.
Okay. The one I was looking at, it still had the Marvies. Okay.
I just had a minor one, 6A. It says electronic tablets. We have phones too. Again, OCD.
I'm sorry, I hate to ask, which page are you on?
Sorry, it's 6A, so it's page 20.
20.
Okay. So.
Anything else in council protocol? So at this point, I don't think we've really, I think we've just kind of given direction to Emily and his attorney to go back, add all these changes. I'm sure we'll have another, further discussion at next week's meeting, for the next time we put her on the agenda.
Mayor, can we take a seven-minute break before moving on to the ordinances?
Second.
Very precise motion.
So I have a motion to take a seven-minute break by Councilmember Scott Rose.
Make it ten.
Second by Councilmember Turner. Call for vote.
Mayor Cal?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Heinz?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Rose?
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tanner Rose?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, we're gonna start back up, we're returning for break. Next item on our agenda is 6A, consideration of a public hearing and possible action on the second and final reading of an ordinance regarding the proposed annexation of the Highlands North Decker Track 75.812 acres, more or less of land located on County Road 132.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you stated, this is the second and final reading of the ordinance for a 75-acre tract, more or less. And here is the location, this is also Hutto Highlands North, a subdivision that was just submitted and will be presented to you soon for the plat. So again, here, we've gone through the five-step process, and now we are just at the second ordinance reading for city council. So with that, we recommend approval.
Does this require a public hearing?
Oh, gosh.
So I will open up this public hearing at 9:31 PM. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Therefore, I will close this public hearing at 9:31 PM. Any question from the council members?
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the second and final reading of ordinance regarding proposed annexation of Highlands North Decker Track 75.812 acres, more or less of land, land located on County Road 132.
Second.
So a motion by Councilmember Scott Rose, second by Mayor Pro Tim Heinz. Any other question or discussion? Call for vote.
Councilmember Tanner Rose?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Rose?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Heinz?
Aye.
Mayor Cal?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Next item is consideration of public hearing and possible action on first reading of an ordinance approving a specific use permit for the property located on Ed Schmidt Boulevard, Emery Farms Commercial Lots 2, 3, 4, and 5, 4.299 acres of, more or less of land, allowing a lodging establishment in the B1 Local Business Zoning District.
Okay, so this is a SUP that's actually just went to Planning Commission on Tuesday, so we do have a recommendation of approval that was recommended by Planning Commission to you on Tuesday night, but we have updated the slides since there was overlap and not enough time to get that into. I also have the chairperson here, so that she can verify that we in fact did have that actual motion.
So with that, good evening, Mayor, Council. We did have a 5-0 vote for, for this item to be able to approve the special use permit. We did have a stipulation that we put in there through B1, which is the, the zoning for this, the special use permit for a hotel allows for, and allowing a hotel at 35 feet, I believe, at current.
What we did is a one-to-one, so I'll go through some of these. You can see the lots here are already plotted.
So we made a, we made a stipulation to do, because there was concern from some of the residents that live behind there, to have a hotel, and 35 feet is about three feet, three stories. And so we had a stipulation put in that we requested a one-for-one, so for every one foot of vertical, one foot of setback of the building. So this is not the, so that can include landscaping, parking, all of the things that would be behind there anyway. And there's already, through the, the zoning, a 20-foot landscaping setback, or a 15-foot with a 6-foot Mason?
6-foot Mason, very well.
Yep.
So 35 feet total from the homeowner's property to the building, or 35 additional beyond what you just said?
If they were, so this is all based off of how vertical they go, was the, the recommendation. So if they went less than that-
If they went 20, then it would be 20.
Mm-hmm.
And Councilmember Gordon, to be clear, it's the one-to-one, in case they do need to come back for a variance of some sort. We don't have to come back for an SUP for the use. I think the use is actually impressive on Ed Schmidt, now that we know that it does connect, and it's going to be more of a commercial corridor in the area. But we certainly will still want to be respectful to the homeowners that are behind there. So if they needed to go to a four-story, and we had a variance of some sort, or a separate zoning action, we would be able to accommodate that without having to bring the SUP back. Of course, variances do have their own public hearing process and notification. So we would still be able to gather the input from the residents, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we would have to take it back for a separate use. What we're really talking about here is just the use for the hotel. We do know that it's looked at that they're probably going to have two restaurants. They don't know exactly where on these lots they're going to site the hotel at this point. So it does traverse across several lots here. But when the hotel is then decided upon their location, then they'll be able to figure out the other two uses as well. Restaurants are allowed by right in B1. You can see here the lodging establishment needs the, the specific use permit, but otherwise, they are allowed to have other things, like restaurants and other commercial by right. So let me go through this really quick. The current future land use map identifies the area as low-density residential and commercial, so the requested use is in compliance. The proposed use is permitted by SUP in the B1 zoning district per the UDC, so it's compatible with existing and permitted uses in the area. And the site is a legal building lot, and it's currently plotted, and the four lots are legal lots. We'll likely end up seeing a replat of some sort, because we don't like to build across those lot lines. So you will be seeing a replat in the future before this fully goes vertical. We did receive two responses to the public notice. One was in favor, one was opposed, and we also had other comments and questions the night of P&amp;Z. So on Tuesday night, we did have a few other questions. And then again, Planning Commission recommends the SUP with the provision that for every foot in building height, that the building would be set back the same distance from that shared property line with the residential. And then we also request dispensing with a second reading on this.
We can't dispense with the second reading, because this is the first reading, and it's not a regular city council.
Then never mind. We will see you again.
Before we go into questions, this does require a public hearing. So let me open up the public hearing. I'm, I will open this public hearing at 9:37 PM. And I do have one person signed up to speak in regards to this. So let me, Scott Carter. Again, if you'll just state your name and your address, then your time will start for the other three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Scott Carter. I live on South Ash Cove, right behind where the hotel is proposed. Thank you for the opportunity to come here. First, I believe that only, that while this information was posted on the website, I think that only residents on my actual street were notified about the meetings this week, Tuesday and today. Available on the website is great, but it does seem to me that this is going to involve or affect the entire neighborhood, so it would have been nice for everyone to get a mailing saying something like Tuesday and Thursday dealing with your neighborhood. Second, a hotel seems to be an unusual addition to back up to a residential area. Neighborhoods with businesses at their entrances typically have a convenience store, restaurants, things like that, but not hotels. Third, it seems to me that building commercial properties at the entrance of any neighborhood ought to be a significant benefit to that neighborhood. And I, I don't see how a hotel would do so, particularly since we have two more a quarter mile down the road. And finally, I understand that Hutto does run out of local hotel room, local hotel rooms, during some large events. I'm just suggesting that they not be at the entrance of a neighborhood. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I think just to clarify, Ashley, per the, per the rules, you're illegally obligated, I just want, I mean, understanding, is you legally obligated just to notify within a certain feet, or is it the notices that went out, or just to a certain feet that doesn't there?
Mayor, yes. So it's 200 feet per state law, so that's what we would have sent. And if, you can see from the map up here, the lot depth plus the right-of-way, and then a second lot depth, it really probably would have only been that. If anything was owned by the HOA, they would have also been notified.
But since the HOA wasn't notified, or they don't own anything, so there wasn't, okay.
Yeah, very likely.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
And is it 200 feet from-
Oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have asked that. I was just kind of, oh, go ahead.
Can I not talk?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yes.
Thank you. So the 200 feet is from what, the center of the property, the front edge, the back edge?
It's from the property line.
So like, the closest property line?
Correct. So it's from that shared boundary out, and then it would also go northeast, south.
And west.
Yeah. You know, it kind of circles it, and it's 200.
Got it. Okay. So it looks like dozens should have been notified.
Correct. And that, I know from the paper copies that were sent out, we sent out quite a few. We could certainly re-verify if, if you'd like.
And see who got them, who didn't.
I think the problem with the 200 feet is, while it's, it goes back to that what's legal, and then what we probably should do, is what's the depth of a lot? Maybe 180, 170 feet deep, or?
There? I don't think they're 170, they're probably more like 100, 110.
Okay. So they ship into people across the street as well?
Right, I'm across, I am technically across the street.
Oh, okay.
My fence does not back up to.
And we'll usually give a little bit more, just because, I mean, if it's right at 200 feet, and you've got a lot right there, you'll just go ahead and notice that.
So any more questions for Scott, or just, is it a general question, or is it a question for Scott?
General question, probably.
Okay. So let me close this. Okay, so let me close this.
Well, I'm over Scott. Okay, so assuming that's commercial property, and so something's going to develop there. And it's always difficult when there's commercial property in front of neighborhoods because if a C-store went there, there'd probably be four or five people come out and say, "Oh, man, not here."
Sure.
With that said, is there something that the hotel developer can do to make this more, in your mind and neighbors you've talked to, to make it more, I guess, where they can accept it better?
More palatable?
Yeah, I mean, for lack of a better term, is there, because, I mean, what I always run into is, there's always a worse use someone can come up with, and so I'm trying to figure out, is there things that they could work with the neighborhood on that...
I hadn't thought about ways to make a hotel there more palatable to the neighborhood. My main concerns were that a hotel outside of a neighborhood seems weird, doesn't seem like it benefits the folks who are living there all the time. It benefits the people who are visiting sometimes, so I hadn't thought about that.
Okay. So I will go ahead and close this public hearing at nine forty-two PM, and we'll open it up to questions from the council member.
So Ashley, do you know how long this has been zoned, B one, commercial?
I believe Emery Farms was developed early, well, mid-two thousand, so since then, I mean, this has been one of the longer-standing B one areas in the city. I know it was done around the same time as when Emery Farms was going in, so certainly they're a very active group.
Yeah, so it's not a surprise that that's going to get commercial.
No, I think it may honestly have been a surprise only because it had not been developed for so long, because the houses have been there for quite some time, that even the tracks to the north, as they started to develop with the new Rio Grande site, I think that was a little bit of a shock to the residents that backed right up to that, is that it was actually occurring at that point. But you can see on the north side, the restaurants you're in, those buildings are looking really good, but I think it's more just that it has sat vacant for so long that there was a surprise that was changing.
I just think we need to do a better job, you know, in general, not blaming anybody, I just think we need to do a better job trying to make sure that the realtors or the developers of these subdivisions make the residents aware of where they're actually buying, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I've seen it sometimes where we can put a land use map, a zoning map in the sales office, and we can start working with the builders to do that, so that when people go in and they can see where their lots are, that they would also then see that, I mean, we also get it on some of the other plots, that people bought a lot premium because of no homes behind them, and that if there's a home behind them. So that could be something that we could work with each of the builders to get out more information on what the city's future plans are.
And we could try that all day long, but we all know exactly how home sales go in the new development areas right now. Everybody's promised the world, everybody's promised that nothing's going to go behind you, and the only way to guarantee that is if there is absolutely nothing behind you that can be built. I would imagine that probably most of the pushback on this is just based off of not the fact that it's a hotel, mainly that it's multi-story, and, you know, everybody has that, "Oh, they can see over my fence" type thing.
So current code would allow it to be as close as twenty feet if they just did with the regular fence, and then they could have a twenty-foot setback. So one of the things that was kind of tossed around several times with Planning Commission on Tuesday night was, well, what about one foot for every foot in height? So at least then you're trying to mitigate that, and you're pushing the building forward, but then knowing the speeds on Ed Schmidt, you're not pushing it so far forward that you're potentially creating an issue for the drivers on the street as well, or making it not pedestrian-friendly or unsafe for some reason.
So the last question I have is, what are we doing about the fenced issue between the lot lines and the concrete fence that we're asking the builder to build, so that we don't run into the same issue that we had behind the car wash?
We are attempting to ensure that everyone is building their fence on their property line, and then working with the HOA and each of the individual property owners so that they can butt their existing wooden fence up to the masonry fence once it's installed.
Wait a minute, so that neighborhood has a little bit of issues when it comes to HOA land, because it doesn't have HOA land that goes all the way around the perimeter, like a lot of neighborhoods. So if they build this masonry fence, say, twenty feet from a person's backyard wood fence, we're then saying that homeowner can then move that wood fence up against the masonry fence?
No, the masonry fence would actually be placed on the property line, so it would just be placed on that shared property line or as close to it as possible. I believe what Mayor Pro Tem Heinz is talking about is there was a separate instance where a masonry wall went in, and it was probably kept six inches or so off the shared property line.
Probably about a footer, so...
Yeah, it was not enough to really get anybody back there to be able to maintain that little strip, so we are trying to encourage and then ensure on the site plans that the masonry wall is really as close to that shared property line, and that we're getting some interaction between the property owners, both on the homeowner's side and then the commercial property side, to join those fences, so we don't have those rodent alleys essentially.
So what happened was you couldn't get back there to weed eat it or mow it, and the weeds just grew up, trash collected between it, rodents were in there, and... We'll have a wood fence next to, if all works out, you have a wood fence next to the masonry fence.
Correct, well, you have the perpendicular to it, and then their back fence line would then be the masonry wall.
So they'd be able to take their back wood fence down.
Correct, it's similar to what we're trying to do, and affecting on the co-op site here for City Hall is that once that fence grid went in, we're contacting and saying, "Hey, if you'd like to take down your back fence, you can," and just attach it to the fence grid.
So then maintaining the fence becomes the commercial property owner's responsibility?
I would believe so. I would need...
How's that enforced? Like, say this fence starts to sag, and the homeowner says, "Hey, this fence is leaning into my backyard, and the hotel has gone in disrepair twenty years from now," how do we, what mechanism does the city have to force the hotel to maintain that?
Well, if it violates code, we can always cite them for it and take action to enforce it. The homeowner can also always, if they're actually intruding on the homeowner's property, the homeowner can bring an action for trespass.
Well, I'm not wanting that. The problem with that is a hotel guy has money and the homeowner doesn't, and so I figure if we're going to approve something, then I think we need to do it in a manner that protects the homeowner to where the homeowner's not, because then they're going to call us, and we're going to say, "Well, bring an action," and they're going to go, "Great."
I think if it starts to come into disrepair, we would just use the code enforcement process to go through and cite the property owner, and so the fence would be on the property owner for the hotel.
And I don't know, well, this is a different question for a different item, but if it's actually intruding on my property, I don't have to file a lawsuit, I can call the police department, because, I mean, trespass is a crime as well.
Yeah, what's the police going to do, fix it or tear it down?
No, they're going to cite the...
Oh, I got you. Cite the hotel owner.
If you don't, I'd be what day.
Okay, so these are a couple, these are a couple of questions with the resolution, or, I mean, the ordinance. And so I was reading under section one, and where I have the question was, when I look at the numbers, ten dot two oh three dot eighteen three, and you go through, it didn't seem like they were matching up to Unified Development Code, and so I didn't know if that's, if there was a new, I mean, I pulled the one off the website.
That should be the most up-to-date. We can double-check the resolution with the city secretary and make sure that we've got those, it's not that we've cited the main section and not the specific section?
Yeah, yeah. I'd say, yeah, probably just checking that.
Yeah, we'll double-check. Is there preference from mayor and council on if it's the main section? So we have sections that say buffer yards, and it's the full section, or do you want it to be more specific? Is there, if there's not a preference, we'll stick with...
I think one of the codes is like mentioning signs.
Okay.
And that's where it confused me, because I was like, well, they're talking about signs and setbacks to signs, and I'm trying to figure out what does that have to do with the hotel, so that's why I thought something might be on.
We'll double-check all the references then.
Okay. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the first reading of an ordinance approving a specific use permit for the property located on Ed Schmidt Boulevard, Emery Farms Commercial Lots two, three, four, and five, four point two nine nine acres, more or less of land allowing a lodging establishment in the B one Local Business Zoning District.
Second.
So a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Heinz, second by council member Turner.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Councilmember Rose, that's actually a great place. The property owner is here, and he also has indicated that he would like to be able to address mayor and council.
Yeah, because at the meeting, there was some confusion around what lots the hotel may go on, which ones the restaurants may go on, so I'm curious what the general thoughts are for the, for the entire thing is if Mr. Castle's here.
Yeah, Mr. Castle, if you'll come up.
Thank you. I'm Bob Castle. I've got a plan. I've only got one, but I can tax it round if there is.
I think it's...
I think that's what we've got in our packet.
Yeah, we've got that in the packet.
Yeah, that's what we've got in our packet, so, yeah, the question, so the question just...
We bought this land fifteen years ago. We started on highway seventy-nine, and we built all the way up. There are already two hotels on this land beside it, Holiday Inn, and then the next one is the man that built the next one, who's going to build the next hotel. So there will be, it's supposed to be three, I'm not saying it's not, but that's been our understanding the entire way. We have a twenty-five-foot setback on the back wall, we have concrete fence. We can't maintain his wood fence if we've got a concrete fence seven feet high. He doesn't need his fence. Mine's going to stay there. And this hotel owner was one of the first ones that came into town and built the hotel, and he's the same one that's intending and hoping to build this hotel. We're going to need hotel rooms, particularly with as much as the people have brought in for perfect game. And that is a great hotel site because you can, you're not crossing the railroad tracks, you are also in a vicinity where you can get something to eat, there's a nice, quite a few restaurants there around now, area to eat. And none of the hotels have restaurants, but we've got plenty of restaurants there. It's a perfect location. We held that lot for, God, fifteen years, almost twenty, all the time for a hotel for that one lot, because it was moved back in, and we moved it up to the further end to get away from seventy-nine, to move it up, and the people built the subdivision behind us.
So do you know which lot that the hotel's looking at?
The hotel, there's a possibility of two different ways. It'll be, just a second.
Mayor Gall, the SUP is actually covering for lots...
I know it's covered, yeah, it's covered two, three, four, and five.
Three, four, and five.
Or he's back there saying four and five?
Because there's a possibility, two ways of going. We may, we may go with the hotel and some outbuildings, and it may be we go with the larger hotel room with fewer outbuildings. It's going to be a blend. I do have a copy of it, you've got it up there. You can start on the right and go back to your left.
So the only place the hotel can't go is lot one?
It'd be lot one or...
It's six.
Because this, because this resolution, or the motion is for two, three, four, and five, so...
Yes.
Yeah, so the hotel will not go into lot one or lot six.
Okay, and it's the same owner that built the other one right beside him. And, you know, we don't have any hotel rooms to speak of hardly now.
Yeah.
And that is a good spot, and if you look at it, and everyone's saying, well, okay, we've got a subdivision behind you, and you do. But the hotel, when we built, the hotel gets built, the very back wall is a masonry wall that goes the whole height for four stories, okay? That back wall is the back line of the building. The stairwell is inside that building for steps going down to get out of the hotels there.
So there won't be any hotel...
So the windows that you're going to think about, and people talking about, oh, they can see down, you can't see anything. We put the windows, they're about three by three, we put the windows up high, and the stairwell, and you go down, and you can't, it's six-six, you can't see out of the window.
So the only windows...
It's just windows to let light at the very top come in in case the power went out and it was daytime.
Okay.
That's the main part of it, and there's no part of that that affects anything to the people behind us, because we've got a twenty-five-foot setback, and we built a wall that nobody can look out and see them. I don't know what else we can do. Now, y'all, go tell me.
I tell you, in talking to people, is there a way, could you all commit, because I think some of that information would be very helpful to some people, is there a way that you all could commit between this reading and the next reading that you offer to meet with some people in the neighborhood where you can at least hear their concerns?
I don't have a problem talking to them, I mean, you know, what am I to talk to them to do it? You know, I mean, to me, I think I followed the rules and the setback all the way on the hotel.
Sure.
And it's not against anybody. I'll talk to anybody, sir, no problem.
I'm just going out there, because sometimes people come in, they develop by neighborhoods.
But I'm not going to go into a neighborhood and go around around the house talking. I'm not going to do that.
No, I'm not suggesting that, just if sometimes people have questions, and they always reach out to...
My door's always open. I was the first person here developing. I moved my company into Hutto, and it's six hundred and twenty people, and I moved a company in here at two hundred and fifty employees.
Well, you've seen a lot of growth.
And I've got one of the largest, and we sold that building, and we moved over Limer Loop. We're developing all that land over there, and so we've got two companies from California we're building buildings on, we've got three other buildings going on it. We built from seventy-nine all the way up to the road that goes into that subdivision. We bought all that land, we built it all out.
So councilmember Tanner Rose, you have some questions?
Yeah, I mean, you answered them. I was curious, because you're going to build more towards, you have two options, so I was afraid to give the full four plots for the SUP, because I'd heard some stuff from the planning and zoning meeting, but it sounds like there's multiple options, so you, I don't want to make you come back numerous times necessarily, but I just wanted to hear what the multiple options were for the layout of the hotels, so...
So anybody have any more questions?
Can you repeat the motion on the floor, please?
To approve the specific use permit for the property located on Ed Schmidt Boulevard, Emery Farms Commercial Lots two, three, four, and five, four point two nine nine acres, more or less of land allowing a lodging establishment in the B one zoning district.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Now, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Heinz, second by council member Turner. Don't we have more questions? Call for vote.
Councilmember Scott Rose?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Heinz?
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Mayor Gall?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tanner Rose?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
If the people behind want anything, others has my phone number.
They need to reach out to Ashley.
And Ashley, I'll answer questions for them. You know, we've been here longer than just about anybody. I'm serious, six hundred and twenty people when I moved my company in here, and we've done a lot of work in this town. We're building a lot now, going to build more.
I appreciate you willing to do that, you mean a lot of people.
It's great, it's great for Hutto, it's great for me, you know, it's been a partnership.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Next item is six C, consideration of a public hearing and possible action on the second and final reading of an ordinance regarding proposed annexation of Riverwalk South, one hundred and eighteen point nine seven one acres, more or less of land located on County Road one thirty-eight.
Okay, so this is the second and final reading of the ordinance, it's just over almost one hundred and nineteen acres. Riverwalk South, you can see from the map, it's just an extension of Riverwalk, it goes all the way down to County Road one thirty-eight. So again, proposed southern extension of Riverwalk subdivision. We do have a plat in now, it needed to be tabled, so we held a public hearing at P and Z, but they are still working on the roadway alignment for Katz Lane, and so we did not feel that was ready to actually be on an agenda, so you will be seeing that likely in August sometime after Planning Commission makes a recommendation. But this is just the final reading for the annexation, so that this will follow all city ordinances... But this is just the final reading for the annexation, so that this will follow all city ordinances as they develop. So you can see here, second reading, uh, second ordinance reading at City Council is the fifth and final step, and-
This does require a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at ten-oh-one PM. And I do have one person signed up to speak on that. Terrence Owens.
Counsel.
Mayor. Terrence Owens, two-two-eight Little Lake Road. Uh, so I was here Tuesday for the planning and zoning, and first of all, I want to thank Jessica and her commission. And, uh, first time sitting in that, and they, it was an awesome to see. Uh, my question and some of the homeowners and lakeside estates, um, just, just kinda curious. I know it's gonna cut into Katz, but I wasn't sure where, uh, it was gonna exit out on one-thirty-seven, or is there going to be an entry and exit point for one-thirty-seven?
One-thirty?
Yeah. One-thirty, I'm sorry. Um, one of the concerns we have is that we're already getting a lot of traffic up Little Lake Road. Uh, I live on Little Lake Road, so I see the amount of cars that come through. We don't have sidewalks, uh, because we weren't annexed in before that being able to be there. So I just kinda wanted to put that out there and kinda make sure that we have another way for people to get in and out. Right now, there's only two ways to get out of our subdivision. Uh, the one that connects to Chris Kelly or six-eight-five and one-thirty-eight, and traffic gets really, really backed up there. Also worrying about, um, construction, uh, people coming in and bringing in materials, so, uh, just kinda wanna put that out there. Uh, I've got about fifteen homeowners, um, that are kinda concerned, uh, about how that's gonna affect. We're not against the, the subdivision. We're just wanting to make sure that the traffic patterns, uh, can not kinda impact our subdivision also. Thank you.
Good question, Mr. Owens.
So I hear that the plan is to take Katz Lane is where, is what you're hearing, and maybe Ashley can confirm this is to take it and run it across that other property and into this property? Is that the plan? Yeah, that's the picture I'm looking at.
So there's an intervening property between, well, there's actually two. Um, the one, uh, directly adjacent to the west, um, is closer to... Katz Lane is gonna have to traverse that site before it ever gets to this one. So, um, eventually, yes, there will be an extension over to one-thirty. We've gotta figure out as a staff how to make Katz Lane enter the service road or six-eight-five, Chris Kelly, at a ninety-degree angle. If you drive that right now, you'll see that it's this wonky little, um, curve, and it's not really a street right now. So all of that would have to be improved to finally connect, but the intention is to have the connection, uh, thus the delay because we needed to have a meeting between those two developers prior to bringing their plots forward to make sure that they have, um, joined those plans up to make sure that they're, we're not getting a disjointed road within a subdivision.
Is that the-
No, I was just gonna ask one more question. So Terrence, you're asking, are there gonna be connections to one-thirty-eight, and so how many, and how it's gonna-
I mean, it'd be great to have, uh, Katz extended out to six-eight-five and give people another way out, but yeah, just wanna see. Cause if that's the case, then people are gonna be using that road mainly, coming out of that potential.
And I think, of course, with the plats, that'll show the-
Correct. So we did already hold the public hearing for Riverwalk South, but because we did not have the plat available, and we think that's vital information to show people, um, we are going to be doing a second public hearing for that. And then when the covered bridge track, which is the one to the west, comes in, we'll also be holding a public hearing on that one as well. So all of those will be public once we actually have a recommendation and, and something that we can show everyone, so that we'll be able to show those to the, um, to the affected homeowners.
Have any questions, Mr. Owens?
No, never mind that. No.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. So I will close this public hearing at ten-oh-five PM, and I will open up to questions for the council.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve six-C as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Scott Rose, second by Mayor Pro Tem Heinz. Any question and vote? Question on the motion? Call for vote?
Councilmember Tanner Rose?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Rose?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Heinz?
Aye.
Mayor Gall?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. Consideration of possible appointments to boards and commissions. Does anybody have any appointments to make this evening?
So Mayor, I have one. I'd like to nominate, uh, William Cole to the Ethics Review Commission.
Second. Got a motion, William Cole. Made by Councilmember Snyder, second by Mayor Pro Tem Heinz. Call for vote?
Mayor Gall?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Heinz?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Rose?
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tanner Rose?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Um, the only other thing I wanna say, just cause Jessica's here, um, and I mentioned this to you earlier, Mayor, one of us, um, needs to get someone on P and Z by the next meeting, so they can quorum the following Monday for their special call. Otherwise, they won't be able to do that. So just get your thinking hat on, and we need to, one of us or both of us need to get someone on that board by the eighteenth. Just, so Jessica doesn't come back to me, since I promised her I would get her someone for the, so they can have their meeting on the twenty-first or twenty, whatever the day is.
We have to have a meeting by the twenty-second in order to do that business.
So it sounds like you're just putting the pressure on the mayor.
I mean, no, I-
If you made the promise.
I know, I'm just, hey, I'm just letting him know he's-
You heard nobody too, so.
Yeah, I know. So just-
One or, one or two of us.
I know. Just let, just, Jessica mentioned it to me Tuesday. I just wanna make sure it's out there.
Any other motion, any other appointments? Okay. Next item is eight-A, budget review and discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is the, uh, presentation that we did at the, uh, council retreat a couple of weekends ago, and I hope you had some time to kind of, uh, mulled over and, and thought about, uh, some of the things that we talked about. Cause at the end of the day, um, we'd like to get some guidance from you on the direction you want us to take as we go into provide the full budget for August first meeting. So let me go ahead and begin. So our agenda tonight is our strategic focus, budget process, requirements, budget overview, and what are our next steps. Our strategic, strategic focus, our vision statement is that Hutto Texas is a family-friendly community that provides superior public safety, outstanding fiscal responsibility, diversified economy, and an exceptional quality of life. Um, our strategic values are that we are responsible, safe, authentic, and progressive. Uh, and our strategic focuses are that we are well-balanced and have a diversified economy, public safety, fiscal responsibility, quality of life and services, infrastructure, and growth. So going into our fiscal year 2020 budget, the strategic initiatives, initiatives, um, that we've posed at the, uh, strategic retreat was that we have a justice center that was in, I voted for in Proposition C, um, and that Proposition C, uh, bond money will pay for that communication center, the nine-one-one call center, but that we also need to staff that. We also need to do some traffic enforcement. Um, we have, uh, potentially six-hundred thousand people coming a year within approximately two years or less. And, um, we also have, um, some, uh, potential to have, uh, drug seizure money if we can get out there and capture that. So that's one of the strategic initiatives as well. We also wanna beef up our public work staffing and equipment. We wanna keep our infrastructure, um, put in our infrastructure as well as keep that infrastructure intact for all the development that is coming into town, and to encourage development as well as to keep our citizens safe. Um, we also want a social media presence. Um, more and more people have a different medium that they get their information from, and use typically now that social media. So we wanna make sure that we're providing all of our citizens, um, and, uh, potential developers, um, anybody that might be interested in Hutto, uh, good forum to get that information. We also wanna continue to increase our IT infrastructure, um, whether it be staffing, which we are doing this fiscal year, um, or data recovery and, um, risk management. Uh, as we grow bigger, uh, obviously, we would become a bigger target. Um, so we wanna make sure that we do that to protect our infrastructure, our, our, our information technology infrastructure. So we've talked before about the impact of the Senate bill. I did a piece, uh, a few council meetings ago, so let me just hit the highlights of what that impact is going to be. Um, first of all, this will be the last year that we have a rollback rate of eight percent. It will be lowered to three and a half percent, um, our next, this, uh, budget cycle. Um, this will decrease the city's, uh, maintenance and operations revenue, general fund revenue. Um, this decrease will also compound over, year over year, um, as, as I, I presented in the, uh, strategic retreat. Um, hitting the rollback rate will require an automatic election. This election will not occur immediately. It will be the first November, uh, week in November, uh, election to run concurrent with other elections, um, which means our budget cycle will be compressed. We will have one public hearing. We will set up a tax rate. And if that tax rate is the rollback rate, then we will have to wait till November to face that election, which will be mandatory. And, um, if that election is successful, then the city will be required to pay for the election, pay for rescinding tax notices, and also pay back the revenue that has come in early that exceeds the election rate.
Just one clarification. It says hitting the rollback rate. Should I say exceeding instead of hitting, or?
If you hit at three-point-five, you have, it's an automatic election.
If you reach, so it has to be three-point-four-nine-nine-nine?
Nine-nine-nine, yes.
If it's, if the election's unsuccessful, we have to pay back all those fees, not, so, if it's successful, we would keep the-
Regardless, we'll have to pay for the election, but if the election is unsuccessful, we won't have to pay back the revenue that we received based on that, that tax, that, uh, property tax rate that we chose initially, so.
Okay.
Our budget process, um, for finance department, the budget never ends. We may go through a summer process with the council, uh, and citizens, but then we have to monitor, monitor and maintain that budget. We start in March, um, with our departments with, uh, preparing budget packages for them to fill out, um, with their requests for, whether it be programs, or staff, or equipment. Um, and then we develop those packages all throughout April and May. And then I put a preliminary budget together for, uh, myself and the city manager to discuss, and then we'll bring in departments to justify, um, the, the things that they're requesting, uh, again, whether it's people, programs, or equipment. Um, and then obviously, then we start the budget cycle with council in June, and that ends in September, and the fiscal year starts on October first. Um, our charter requirements, that, uh, we have to have a, a budget presented to you by August fifteenth. Um, well, the budget officer, which is the city manager, has to present a budget, uh, to you by August fifteenth. Then there's also message requirements, but also we are required to conduct public hearings. If there're gonna be a, uh, tax rate that brings in more revenue, doesn't necessarily mean it's an increased tax rate, but there are requirements if it's gonna bring in revenue. So anytime that you've got a increased tax base, it's gonna increase your revenue. You're gonna have to go through those, um, cycles, uh, of, of public hearings anyway. And then also public hearings for the budget itself, and those are currently scheduled for the fifteenth and the twenty-second. And we've, we've, uh, discussed the calendar with the council several times. Uh, and then we have to adopt for the last day of the current fiscal year, which we'll adopt before that. Uh, our fiscal and budgetary policy, which, um, the council has seen and approved in April, um, this is in order to maintain, stay, maintain stable levels of services, um, that we may be conservative and objective and analytical in our approach to preparing estimates, both revenue and, um, expenditure, that we maintain a balanced budget, that we also, um, use non-recurring revenues for non-recurring expenditures or capital purchases, um, that we also do contingency appropriations. Uh, the charter says ten percent, uh, reserve. We, we currently maintain twenty percent reserve in both our, uh, general fund and our utility fund.
Um, I had a, someone asked me, can you explain what the reserve amounts are? Because someone thought it was a much larger number than what I was expecting it to be. So can you give, like, roughly what the reserve sits at?
Sure. So when you calculate what your expenditure's gonna be for that particular upcoming year, you take twenty percent of that, and that's what you have to sock away for, and typically, it's a, it's a three-month. Some places are, are subject to hurricane or what have. We have a six-month. But so you take that total expenditure that you're budgeting for that fiscal year, and then you sock that twenty percent away, and then what you have left is your unrestricted.
So it's not like twenty million sitting in the reserves?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
Someone asked that. I just wanted to clarify that officially.
I don't think even New York City probably has that big of a reserve.
Yeah.
We're gonna talk about our general fund, uh, revenues, expenses, enhancements. We're gonna talk about tax rate and taxable value. Um, I, I would like to say, this is exactly where we need the direction as, um, uh, staff, um, before, so that we can start calculate, calculating the tax rate that, that council wants to see. Um, because what, what will happen is, once I get the certified tax rule on July twenty-fifth, the assessor and I will start the process of calculating the tax rate. We will start the publication process. What, what will happen is, while we're going through the iterations of the budget process, for, for, especially for those of you who are new, what we typically do is, because when we do the publication for the tax rate, we pick a rate, you pick a rate, that you will not exceed. That doesn't mean it can't be talked down from. Um, we did that the first year that I was here. Um, we, because you have publication requirements, and you have to have your public hearings and your ordinances read within a certain amount of days from the, from the publication time. So typically, the assessor will, will set the tax rate not to exceed what you've decided it not to be, not, not to exceed. And then you, we work down from there, uh, if y'all, if y'all so choose. So currently, the way that this general fund, um, proposed budget has worked is at the rollback rate. And right now, the rollback rate that myself and the tax assessor has calculated is sixty-eight cents. There are still things that are coming in. This is not a certified rule yet, so there are still protests being done. So, you know, this is based on the current information that we have, and that sixty-eight cents is the rollback rate.
When you get the certified thing on the twenty-fifth, can it change, or is that locked in? That's-
That's it. That's it, yes. All right.
Okay.
Now, as you go through the year, your levy can change as things get protested out, but, but yeah, so.
But it, that's usually pretty spot-on for most persons.
It's ninety-five percent of, ninety-five percent of the appraised value is now certified and locked in, so.
Okay.
Yeah. And typically, the, the, uh, Williamson County Appraisers District gets us, gets it to us a few days earlier, which is very helpful, because then we can get all our publications done in a timely manner. But this particular, um, requested budget, um, all the way to the end, the fiscal year 2020, is based on sixty-eight cents. Um, it's based on the, the maximum, uh, uh, general fund M and O that we could receive. And so as we go through, through this, those enhancements that the departments have requested that have been vetted are one-point-eight million dollars. So what happens is, as you start, you know, wanting to ratchet down the tax rate, the tax rate, we'll have to start ratcheting out some of the enhancements. And so that's, that's the council's, that, that's what y'all do in the interim process that we'll be going through. Um, I, I do wanna point out that, um, where you say, where you see it says any available fund balance, it says negative eight-hundred thousand. My notation is that this does not include attrition. This is at a hundred percent, um, full salary benefits, all positions filled, all year long, everybody getting their total pay-for-performance increase. It's not, that's not typically what happens. So, but this is, you know, worst-case scenario as far as personal costs are concerned for the positions that we have and that have been approved. So, again, with ten percent attrition, you will have a negative, you'll have a positive fund balance to work with. And we do meet the twenty percent, um, reserves with this budget. So what makes up our revenues, you know, is majority of it's property taxes. So again, this is using the full rollback rate, um, property tax, um, to get the nine-point-two million dollars in property tax revenue. And then our sales tax, um, following is estimated at a fifteen percent growth. We've, we've continued to see that, if not more, um, in the last couple of years. I mean, we're right at fifteen percent this year over last year, so. Um, development fees, um, are, are very healthy, and I've worked with, um, Ashley on getting those numbers because that is, that's her forte, so, um, comfortable with those numbers. And then, um, then I also do some of the, uh, analysis on some of the other, uh, revenues that are smaller and just trend those historically, but. Um, so we're looking at nineteen point, almost nineteen-point-four million dollars in total revenue.
And so column three was fifty-one cents. That's what we are at today?
Column, the current budget, yes.
Yep. And then the, the other one is the, the sixty-eight cents?
Yes, sir.
And that's roughly a twenty percent increase in revenues through property taxes, sales taxes?
Right. Right. And for those who know me, I'm incredibly conservative. In fact, I've been told maybe too conservative, but I'd rather under-protect and over-achieve. So I've been in the situation and worked for a city where things were going great. Oil and gas was just top, just running top numbers, and then all of a sudden halfway through the fiscal year, we plummeted by 800,000. Small town, 800,000 meant a whole lot to us. So I typically tend to estimate very conservative auto revenues.
If I could ask one other question, since property taxes is by far the biggest increase, if you go from 51 to 68, it's like a 33% increase. Just for math reasons, why wouldn't a 33% increase in the tax rate equate to more than a 20% increase in revenues?
Well, because the 33% in the tax rate also includes the INS portion. The INS portion is not in here. The INS portion's in a different fund, it's in the debt service fund.
What does that mean for the people who are listening?
So what that means is, your tax rate has two components. The one component is the MNO, which goes into the general fund, takes care of your police, your admin, your parks, things like that. The INS portion is what covers your debt. And the debt comes from the geo-bonds, like the geo-bonds that we just, that were just passed in the election. So when we issued that 25 million dollars in geo-bonds for the Prop A and Prop C, that debt service payment will now be paid for by that INS portion. So that's how those two pieces work together.
Gotcha.
I think that's something that confuses a lot of people too, because we talked about the rollback rate being 8%. And then when you do the math, and you say 51 cents to 68 cents is this 33% increase, can you help us kind of walk through for a layman?
Yeah, the rollback rate, the 8% rollback rate, that 8% is based on your MNO portion. It's not, doesn't have anything to do with your debt. So what your effective rate is, is the exact same rate that would get you the exact same levy as last year. So if your tax base starts widening, that rate's going to go down. So that effective tax rate is what's going to get you the levy that you got last year. So, but when you take the MNO piece out of it, which is just the general fund piece, it's not the debt service piece, and you take that rate and multiply it times the 8% or 1.08, that's your rollback rate. But then you add your INS back to it. Your INS is calculated based on your debt service payment. So when you're giving that, getting that information to the assessor, you actually have a debt service schedule that's provided to you by your financial advisors. So it is a specific dollar amount that is provided, and you give that calculation to the tax assessor. And then they calculate what that INS rate is based on your debt service. So that piece, that INS piece based on, is based on how much debt you have and how much debt you're issuing. And so that was part of the November election was, so we had 125 million dollar, you know, three propositions. So here's what, here's what would be added to your tax rate, to your INS portion.
So Michelle, are you saying that the 60, if you go from 51 cent to 61 cent, is that considered voter-approved?
Correct.
Okay. So, so really, you know, if you're, if you're looking at us staying constant, then it would be 61 cents is what has been approved by the voter so far, based off the INS calculations for the debt that the voters approved. So if you move from there, then really, the rollback rate then is 68 cents would be 7 cents above voter-approved. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if you're really looking at it percentage-wise, you'd have to really, because, you know, you got to do what the voters actually do. So if you're really looking at it from a percentage standpoint, it's really the percentage between 61 and 68 cents.
Right.
Right? Which is not 33%.
Right. Well, no. And let me, let me just, let me go a couple of slides here further. So here's a calculation now with, with the current information for fiscal year 2020. This is what we have currently. So effective tax rate, the rollback rate, and then some options that we're going to talk about. But if you can see that INS rate is 21 cents. Okay? So our INS rate before, like currently, right now, is 12 cents. So that's your 10 cents right there. So that, your calculation for that total 68 cents, sorry about that, that total 68 cents, it concludes that going from the 12 and a half cents to the 21.2 cents. So that's your 10 cents. That's the voter-approved debt service piece of it. The rest of it then is just your MNO and what council wants to do with that piece. So your debt service, your INS is going to be the 21 cents. That's going to take over your debt. So it's then the flexibility between that 62 cents, the 61 and a half, and the 68. That's where your flexibility comes in, and what you decide, programs, equipment, people, you know, what mix you want. So that's your flexibility, so.
So on the INS 10-cent piece, I'm looking at the last bond paperwork that went out, and with it, maybe it's just specific to this, where each ones, where's the percentage specific to each bond with INS was. So it was like 7 cents for one, 2 for another, 1 for another, so it all added up to 10. Is that how it works?
Oh, you're talking about for the proposition language? Yes.
Okay, it was specific for you, okay.
So if you don't spend, if you, one of the bonds is for the communication system, right? So if we decide not to do that and push it for a year, what happens to the money you collect? Say we collect the money in the INS, and then we decide to postpone that for a year, what happens to that extra revenue?
So what we'll wind up doing is, so this first tranche was basically A and C. So it was still, it's still 10 cents. But as we do a different tranche, that's going to roll around, and some of your C's going to drop out, and some of your, and some of your B's going to drop in. So that constant debt service payment is going to be that debt service payment, no matter what Prop A, B, C is in it. So that's kind of how we've designed those, basically it's going to be five tranches, so.
So the people need to know that they passed 125 million, I guess 125 million bonds to be sold. And so part of this 10-cent increase is for that additional debt we're taking on as a community.
Yes, yes, sir.
And that's kind of where I was trying to get, is just to remind the voters when they voted in November, they voted for a 10-cent increase.
Right.
And so, yeah, really, we're talking, I mean, we're already at 61 cents. And so now it's figured out from 61 to 68.
So I'm reading the bond thing again, and so I'm back to this. And it says, "The average cost to a homeowner's property tax bill with the passage of the collected proposed propositions." So I'm assuming collected would mean all three. Is estimated at $70 for a $100,000 home, which would be 7 cents. But we're all using 10. So how did we get from 7 to 10 in the last eight months?
So I would have to look at, because I wasn't actually here when the, when the material was put together, I'd have to look at the calculation you're looking at, but...
Because that's almost a 50% miss. If you go from 7 to 10 cents, I mean, you missed by, you missed the projection by 50% all of a sudden. So I'd just be curious how it went from 7 to 10. And I know you weren't here, so I'm not saying, it's you who did the calculation. I'd just, I'd be interested at the next meeting to see why we said 7 with the voters, and now we're saying 10 all of a sudden.
I'd be glad to take a look at it, Councilwoman Rose.
Thank you.
I saw the same thing. I think we're looking at the same website. Yeah, I kind of wondered the same thing. I just assumed this was an estimate, but yeah, if you could let us know, I'd like to know that too.
I think at that time, that was considered an estimate, an example, more so as a fact. In fact, the proposition language itself, it said that it authorized the debt to be...
Yeah, it says estimate it right in there.
As high, as high as necessary to finance the 125 million. So when you look at the actual proposition ordinance that was passed by the voters, you know, it kind of made it clear for that. So that was more of an example.
Yeah, I mean, it says assumes projected assessed valuation growth, current market interest rates. I'd just be curious where all the projections were, and then I'm just concerned, because yeah, it's only 3 cents, which isn't a huge number, but 50, when you look at the percentage, it's a pretty big miss on the projected. So I'd just be curious what that analysis was to see what changed in the, in the assessed valuation growth and current market interest rates, considering, I'm assuming valuation growth is still looking pretty strong, and the interest rates are not, haven't changed a ton since that time, so.
Okay, absolutely. So as we just discussed, you know, property taxes makes up the majority of our revenue, and sales tax is not too far behind. And so expenses by category, salary and benefits, obviously it's going to be our biggest expenditure. And when you look at the enhancement breakdown, the biggest request is for bodies, so, and that's about 1.2 million dollars. And I'll get to what those requests are, but with those bodies comes stuff, equipment or vehicles or what have you. And then, so our requested budget, based on the total enhancement requested, would be almost 21 million dollars. That's, again, with the tax rate at 68 cents. So our base budget being 19, that's without any enhancements at all. Again, as you can see, our salary and benefits is 70, almost 71% of our total budget. And that's not unusual in pretty much every city that I've worked in, especially when you have public safety, that's going to be about right. And even more so when you have both public safety, fire, and police, you're right around 75%, especially if they have negotiated contracts. And then by division, so, let me just kind of flip through the pie chart. So our public safety, obviously, is the biggest division, and that's 33, 33.6%. And I think it was, what was it, Mr. Jones? When we started, it was maybe 17, 16, 17%? So we've really grown in public safety, and it's a wonderful thing. And then administration is the next biggest one. And administration contains not only city manager's office, but human resources, economic development, city attorney. So there's multiple divisions that are housed in administration.
Can we get a breakdown at the next one of those divisions and what the expenditures are, or the projected expenditures are?
And it says divisions, but that's actually departments.
Yeah, which, yeah, however, how are you breaking down by group?
You got it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we took a quick look at this. So this is, this is an analysis I put together. I've been calculating the tax rate for a long, long time, and of course, I always, I always get with my buds over there at the assessor's office, make sure we're all working on the same page while we're still waiting for some of the information to come in. So I had her verify my numbers. And so right now, our effective tax rate, based on, and our certified, our preliminary certified values, were almost $2 billion. So we're, we are indeed, our tax basis is growing, so. And we're getting more commercial, getting, I think our residential was like 88% when I first started here, and now we're down like to 82%. So we're starting to diversify, which really will help the taxpayers, because once you get in commercial, retail, manufacturing, and light industrial, it's going to take some of that burger off the residential taxpayers. So taking a look at, you know, if we use the effective tax rate, we would get about 7.2 million dollars in MNO revenue for our general fund. Well, right now, in fiscal year 19, that's about what we've collected. Makes sense. That's what effective tax rate does. It gets you exactly what you got in the prior year. So with that, and then also, on our new improvements, we have about 112 million dollars in new improvements, which is about 40 million dollars more than last year. So on new improvements, that gets pulled out of your calculation, so, out of your tax rate calculation, which is good. So that gets pulled out, and then you get your tax rate, and then you get to apply that tax rate to that new property. So that's the benefit you get from the new property, the $415,000. As, I'm just going to say that the tax assessor said this, I heard him say that, this is gravy. So this is the benefit of new property. It's not part of your calculation, and yet you get the revenue off of it. So the more new improvements you have come on your roll, the better. And so, especially when you start talking about commercial and industrial and things like that. So then I went ahead and calculated the rollback rate. Like I said, it's 68 cents, and that generates 9.2 million dollars in MNO revenue for our general fund, a significant difference from the effective tax rate, 2 million dollars, almost 2 million dollars. And then we already talked about the INS rate. The INS rate's going to generate what it needs to generate to pay our debt service. When you look at the change in, from prior year, we're using the rollback rate, it's almost 2 million dollars. So, you know, that provides a lot of bodies and programs and equipment, public safety, public works, you name it. So, and the new revenue from 68 cents would be a little over 500,000. So then what I did was, I did a couple of options. The option A, which is somewhere in the middle, 64 cents. And what we would get from that, and what we would lose from that. So what we would lose from that is about 800,000 going from the rollback rate to 64 cents. What happens is, so in a, so if you take the rollback rate, here's the enhancements, as we call them, which is staff, equipment, programs. And if you go with the rollback rate, there's 17 FTEs that are being requested. The majority of those are in public safety. Two are police officers for traffic enforcement, one sergeant to start kind of digging up to make more departments. And then 10 communication staff, which are 911 operators, that would be operating that new communication center that is in that bond package. So, and then an employee in communications, a social media presence, and then another fleet person and another facility person, because of the fact that we are growing. And it is cost-effective for us to take care of our own fleet and take care of our own equipment. And it is cost-effective for us to have, you know, janitorial staff, not only in this large facility, but we have other facilities as well, parks and things like that, where they can assist. And then the various equipment and vehicles that goes with those requests. But what happens?
Michelle, just a quick numerical clarification on the communications. Could we make that actual 10, if it's 10 instead of 1?
Can I make it what?
10 instead of 1. We've got 1.0 in the, in the presentation. You did say 10 for communications, correct?
Oh, no, and public safety, I'm sorry. Public safety is 13.
13, okay. All right, my bad.
Yes, sir. That's a good point, though. That's a good catch. But what happens when you want to go down to the 64 cent, is then you've got to start making some decisions. And the easiest decision here, well, not the easiest, but the most bang-for-the-buck decision here, when you start losing that 800,000, what we saw in that previous slide, is the comm staff, the 911 center. And even still, we'd have to cut a little bit of something somewhere else, because I think it was like 777,000 for comm staff, but we need 800,000 cut here. So as you can see how the iterations start to work, then if we did the actual 61 and a half cents, well, basically, we now only have two FTEs, two full-time equivalents, and those would be the two traffic enforcement. I mean, we can slice it and dice it however, what makes sense. I was trying to just kind of make the quickest, you know, without going, okay, piecemeal over here, piecemeal over here. All right, I know if I take this staff here, or take that equipment there, I'm going to get to that 64 cents and that 61 and a half cents. So we can do it however, however you want, that makes sense to you. But, you know, some of those staff came with vehicles and equipment, so that was kind of a, yep, that, if that person goes, that equipment goes. So that's kind of the mindset there. So that gets you down to your nothing but 10 cents above the tax rate deal, the 61 and a half cents. So what we need is some direction is, because as I'm preparing the budget document for you, well, for Mr. Jones to deliver to you before August 1st, before our meeting, I can... I can do four or five different budgets with a bunch of different tax rates, but-
We really need to get from you where you're at.
What I'd, what I'd like to know is what is House Bill 2 going to do to us next year, the year after, the year after?
So I did a, a quick analysis and basically what happens is we, if, let's just say we took a 5% instead of 8% rollback rate and then we hit, got that 3.5%, it's going to hit us to about, to the tune of about a million and a half dollars. So it's going to hit us hard. So every little notch down that we go is going to be compounded next year, and the next year, and the next year, and the next year. So-
But that's a million and a half back in the taxpayers' pockets though. I mean, yeah, it's lost for us, but it's a million and a half that goes back to them that we're not taking.
And, and that's, 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 that's why we all sit up there, that's council decision, absolutely. And it kind of just starts coming down to when you start to enter a process. So, you know, what programs or staff or equipment-
But then we start cutting services, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And it's really hard to take services. After you've already given service, it's hard to take it back because they expect that service or they want that service. So once you start cutting services, then it's just another issue.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not looking at it as, it's just revenue, meaning it's our citizens' tax dollars that we're, that we're taking from them. It's not just lost revenue for us, it's money we put back in.
I understand it's our tax dollars.
But that's the point I made at the county, or at the city council retreat was that when we talk about revenue, coming from a retail background, we're not really selling anything, we're providing a service, but when we say, well, if we don't take this today, we're going to lose this much revenue, I look at that like, well, I think the reason the state might have passed the law is because cities build school districts, they all build magnificent buildings and they pay high salaries. And at some point it gets where you start struggling to pay that. And we talk to people in Hutto, it's not getting easier, but it's not getting easier in the rest of metro area. I had a question, a couple of slides ago, you, you were talking about, I think you said any increased investment isn't calculated and then that money becomes whatever the, guy at the county called it gravy?
Oh, yeah, because, because what they do is they pull out, any new improvements gets pulled out of the calculation. Mind you, the calculation is like about eight pages long. So that gets pulled out of the calculation. So, because what will happen is if you've got that new improvement in there and your tax base is bigger, then your effective rate is smaller. So they pull that out, then they calculate the effective tax rate. Because even though it was, even though it's on the roll now, it wasn't on the roll when it affected your tax like year, love you last year, so.
So how would this help us or hurt us? So one of the, one of the, some of the information we got on April 18th was that, the term was last year, I don't know if that's last calendar, last fiscal, but last year we're getting $2 billion in investment in Hutto and this year it's going to be $4 billion in investment in Hutto. And so numbers like that, if we're going to get $4 billion in investment this year, is that a lot of gravy or is that, how does that make, how does that bring in?
So how the assessed value works is what's on, what's on the roll as of January 1st. So if, if it's a, let's just say perfect game, they just start now and they've got some improvements on January 1st, it's whatever those improvements are, not what that future total build out is going to be. It's whatever improvements are on the ground as of January 1st each year. So they're not looking at it from what the total build out is, they're looking at it from what's on the ground, January 1st.
Sure. So we're up, go with this attitude. So we had, I don't remember what you said our valuation was, but we had $2 billion in investment last year in Hutto. We're doubling it to $4 billion this year. When we're calculating out the impact of SB 2, are we taking those, that $4 billion in investment, are we associating some sort of tax base to that where we run it out, we can say, hey, we're, because that's $6 billion in investment, we're being told in two years and so there's got to be some tax money coming in on that, right?
Well, that's not how, well, that's not, I get what you're saying, I do absolutely get what you're saying, but as far as calculating the tax rate and what we're going to get, it's literally what's on the ground. And so I get what you're saying. What can be said is this has been invested and this has been invested, but-
Michelle, can I interrupt? The, the statutory and constitutional duty of the central appraisal district is to determine real estate values. So you can, it's just like your house. If you make an improvement to your house, in, in all likelihood, you're going to spend a lot more money than the actual increase in property values. So you can invest $2 billion into an economy. The only impact on property taxes is how much does the central appraisal district determine that actually increases property values? So building perfect game, you could spend $500 million developing the property, that doesn't translate into $500, $500 million.
No, I don't think, yeah, and I don't think it does. What I was thinking more in terms of, we're saying, hey, SB 2 is going to hit us by a million two over so many years because that 8% rollback went to three and a half. And I'm proposing a different view that, yeah, if there's no more development growth in Hutto, that's 1.2 million. But if we have whatever, Project Bravo, since I don't want to get any names, they come in and spend 100 million and the assessor hits it at 25 million, that 1.2, although it's 3.5, it's not 1.2, it might be 1.1 or it might be 1. And so I'm just proposing that instead of a, I don't want everybody thinking that we've got dire issues coming up because we have so much investment pumping in, $6 billion in investment ought to generate something.
There should be offset, absolutely.
And you'll also have an offset as long as, as long as you're in a, in an era of rising property values, that will also serve as an offset.
Also too, some of the investment may just be in capital improvements, private capital improvements like-
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Some of those investments might be also inclusive, inclusive of some of the capital improvements like, for example, machinery, equipment, or, you know, whatever it may be. So it's a lot that goes into that factor, but for the assessed valuation perspective, you know, they're looking at the, what's on the ground in January.
I think that is, if you're looking at it as a multiplier effect, when you're looking at your development service fees, when you're looking at your sales tax, when you're, so you're taking those things into consideration as well when those kind of things are happening, so it's not just the-
Yeah, that's kind of what I was trying to figure out is, is when we project this out, are we just going with, I'm a very conservative person too, so I can appreciate your views, but sometimes I've been known to, people say you're too conservative to where, you know, there's 10 houses going up and it's like, yeah, but if they're not, you know, move in ready by January 1st, then they don't count. And you're like, well, it's, it's June and they're putting a roof on it, I think they're going to make that type of stuff.
No, I try to look at it in a holistic picture because growth does drive other things, like I said, sales tax, development services, fees, so even inspections, all of that. So I try to look at that as a whole, in a holistic.
I mean, a good example of that is, you know, some of our residential builders, you know, they're, they're hiring some of our contractors to do some of their work. There's a spinoff effect to, to all of, about the investment that's going on.
Yes.
So to all of your options, you know, you've got option A, option B, we kind of talked about some of those, it seems like they're all around personnel because that's kind of the biggest bang for your buck, right? Are we looking at other options that take money somewhere else besides just personnel?
Well, so-
You're thinking like rent out the council chambers for meetings and stuff like that?
No, I just, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it just, it just seemed like the, kind of the answer was if we want to cut, then we just have to cut heads.
So, well, and if you, if you, if you look at this kind of summary enhancement was, the, the majority of it is heads.
Okay.
So, you know-
And like you said, it comes with, when you cut a person, like a police officer, then you don't need a vehicle for him and you don't need all his equipment, so I guess that makes sense.
Exactly.
Okay.
The major, the major component to what we're proposing here is, is, is the staffing for, you know, the voter-approved comm center for the police department. I mean, you know, that's quite a bit of staff. Every time you hire a police officer, you're going to spend more because you've got training and certification, everything involved in that. So it's that. And then also too, on top of that, what's reflective in here is, is the increase of personnel, personnel in terms of general labors to our street department and drainage department because of demand and the requirement for services are higher now.
Yeah. And then that's kind of what's going to be my next comment was, the first thing that's really realistically has to go is the comm center and the voters overwhelmingly said we want that.
Right.
And so-
There wouldn't be that, there have been cities that have built things that, that then sat there, they weren't staffed. I know a couple of them down south that did that and nice convention center and then we didn't think about staffing it, so yeah, I mean, it, yeah.
But it sounds almost like that's kind of what happened. If we put a bond out and people said, yeah, we want it, now we've got to come back and go, well, it's seven or 10 cents to get what you want, but on the backside, now we've got to add another 10 cents to staff everything you guys wanted. And so now, I, I don't know if everybody, I guess it's in a way it's like buying a brand new house and forgetting you've got to buy furniture, but we have additional costs now that's almost doubling the people's tax rate. And so now I wonder if you went back and asked people again, hey, what do you want this year versus what do you want in two years or one year because you're going, you're going to get 68 cents to get everything you voted for or you're going to get, you know, 64 or 61 and get some of it this year and some of it next year and so.
But I think what you're, you're talking about, you're not talking about just eliminating communication center completely, you're just saying if we take it out of this year's budget and put it in the, if we hold off a year, if we hold off a year-
Just talking about staggering.
So the, the issue though, here's, here's where we come in the issue if we do that. We can stagger it, I can do, I can do a phase in, kind of see what, like if we did one shift, I have to work with the chief on that, see how that's even feasible, but if we could phase that in, but if we try to do all 10 of those and then next year after we've been reduced to a cap of three and a half, good luck.
Also too, when you have a 911 center, you also require by law, their shifts are regulated as well, you know, to deal with things, to make sure that the employees for the 911 responders aren't too tired. It's just a lot of regulations surrounding that, that impacts that number as well, so many, you've got to have so many on duty, et cetera, et cetera. So there's, there's some, there's some rules and regulations with respect to how you manage and run a comm center.
We currently pay the county for their services for, for 911 service, right?
Yes.
If we have a comm center and it's up and running and we've got it fully, we've got it fully staffed, can we service other cities and charge them and?
Yeah. I mean, that's one of the models that-
Chief Hall, can you step up for a second?
Yeah, because I think this really drives the whole budget is what it sounds like is if we're either getting a comm center and we're going to be mid 60s and, or we don't have the comm center and we're down to a lot lower, right? Is that safe to say that most of the costs-
We've made this pretty, this has been a pretty bare bones budget. I mean, it really centers much about, around all of the bond election and the things that, the increase in service and the comm centers.
Certainly, certainly, I mean, you know, building a building with nobody in it is one thing, but chief, you had, why don't you discuss about what the business plan is?
I proposed a couple of ideas on, we could provide services for ISDPD and ISD school bus system because they all use the county, the county radios right now. And I know that the school district transportation department is looking at using LCRAs as a possibility. And then we could also contract for public works, the street department, we could actually have radios provided for those people so they-
311 systems and that kind of-
311 system reverse 911. We're providing the full package to our citizens instead of relying on a county entity to provide those answers.
You've just been a comment, I think it's a good benefit of that communication is the reverse 91.
Yeah, the reverse 91.
Like when we had the water, last time, we'd have an easier way to contact all our citizens to-
Something as simple as a train blocking all the intersections except for one, we could put that out.
So it's, it's a two-way communication, it's not just a one-way, I mean, it's just-
It's completely enhancing our current service level. It's what it, what it, what it does, everything from-
The example I gave of the 11-minute 911 call holding, that happens daily. I heard another one today, we've had a 911 call, call holding for eight minutes, but all your units were busy. I don't know why dispatching calls, supervisors say we've got a 911 call, they just assumed everybody was busy, like, and it just doesn't make sense to me. And, but I had no reports other than to talk to the communication director and he said, all right, chief, I'll, I'll look into it and I don't hear anything back, so.
And you kind of summarized it, that's the balance of the crux of where we're at and we have to make that, the tough part is, on one hand, we've got to say citizens are going to cost you a little more money, but on the other hand, if we don't spend the money and if you're in emergency and you've got to wait eight minutes, eight minutes is a long time to wait for someone to respond, they want a response today, so how do we, you know, it's, you've got to have, can't have one without the other, I mean, it's kind of, it's the whole challenge.
We have a high level of service we provide for our citizens and to keep building on that, we need to build this communication center. And so we need, so this shows the decision on how we go about that.
And I think to point out, if this is, we're not talking, at this point, we're not talking about another building, right? Or, I mean, or is it enhancing the existing?
Yeah, it would be a part of the construction of a new building and stuff.
Yeah, it would be a part of the structure new. We've looked, so we, we did look at some possibly building out where we currently are and the expense of retrofitting the building, I'd be glad to say bring some of y'all over there and show, show you some of the problems we ran into with that.
Yeah. And then plus, also too, given where we're building the new overpass, one of the, one of the big issues that we're, we need to deal with is oftentimes, you know, you know, our cops will be able to then get over the rail, but strategically, you know, doesn't make sense for it to be closer over there so they can have easier access to path. So you get into a lot of different things that has the potential to do some of your response call ratings and, and everything else as well.
How much, how much are we paying the county?
I don't know, I don't have the figures right off the top of my head, sir.
I'm just trying to think, and I'm sure Michelle's probably looked at it definitely as if we're no longer paying that amount, that'll be over here to help offset some salaries for the employees.
Plus they get our 911 revenue, they get our 911 revenue, it's not much, but-
This revenue on 911?
Uh huh.
To maintain the 911.
Uh, gotcha. Oh, from the telecom?
Yes.
Patty, you know?
So the communication center, you're looking at building a separate building, a justice center of some sort, you're the Oco Pass. When, do you have a timeline on when you would like to have this communication center built out?
I would like to see it opening up shortly after or before perfect game opens up for servicing, we can have an influx of, influx of people in the city.
So salaries won't be needed until it's up and running?
Yes and no, we will have to begin training, just like the police officer, communications officers have a four to six month window of training. And we would have to contract with probably Williamson County to get that training.
That's 2021, right? May of 2021?
Yeah, right now they're in design, started a design process and the thought and the goal was potentially to start construction in, in 2021. In 20, I'm sorry. In 20, which means the building won't be done for, you've got to plan for a year for the building and you've got to plan for another four months or so prior to that for training.
So kind of building on Patty's points, what will we do with the 800,000 while that's not, while there's not staff there, where does that 800,000 go?
So-
I have a question, sir.
So, my question was, so if we, if we approve the budget for this year to go to 68 and you get the 700, 800,000 for the, for the staffing piece, where would that 800,000 go since you wouldn't need it until later in 2020? Where does that, does that money just get held? Does it get spent in other places? Where, where does it sit?
I would propose that it goes into the general fund and that it's actually used for a couple, you know, because you do have a time period in there. But, you know, expensive, I mean, there's some expenses associated with just being a startup. I mean, anybody knows who start up a new business, you got expenses associated with just starting things up. And when you, you start talking about building a new police headquarters, the comm staff, you're effectively starting up a new business and that you're starting up a comm center 911 program. So there's going to be some additional expenses.
I mean, isn't that money though all covered in the bond that we passed to where-
I mean, isn't that money though all covered in the bond that we passed to where, I'm assuming the bond money builds the building and like furnishes it, right?
The bond money will build the building and furnish it, but the other gear that they wear and all the stuff, that, that, that's not covered by bond money, so.
Can we maybe, maybe to give, to give Officer Hall, maybe just, can we maybe put on the next agenda since, I mean, we've still got time before our budget process. Maybe go into a little more and you can put some together, some presentation of what all equipment we have to buy, what, what would be capitalized, what would be expense wise, the M and O side, which would be the INS side. You know, kind of maybe give a little more, give you time to kind of put that presentation together.
Why don't we present the business plan to you, Ford?
Yeah, can I also?
I think if you can do, if we have him do that, I mean, we, before August, I mean, that gives us a chance. So that gives you time to get all that information rather than sitting here trying to pull at you with about 100 questions and kind of go through that whole process.
Yeah, on top of that, can you also provide where the service is at now with your call times, what, you know, what it looks like operating with them? And then what you would expect with the business plan, what you would expect to operate with a local one? I don't want to use any words against public safety in general, whether it's county or you guys, but I'd love to see where we're at using county services and then what we would expect the improve. I'm gonna say improvements to be by bringing it in-house for the most part. I'm trying to say that without talking badly about anyone, so.
In essence, a way to show the people that, because the other thing I would add to be able to show the people is what are the, we see this rate, 51, 58 and all that. But how much is that? I know that person could do the calculations, but a $200,000 house, how much are we talking? Are we talking it's $75 increase? Well, then people maybe aren't so upset. If it's $800 increase, then people are probably thinking, man, I. I like it, but I can't afford it type stuff.
So you want the difference between the 61 and a half, 64, 68, the impact on say a $100,000 house?
Yeah, there where someone could sit there and go, okay, my house I think is worth 200 and so I just double that and like, okay, I'm looking at a $150 increase. That's acceptable to me, but if it's 800, they may have buyer's remorse and people may say, you know what? We voted for something. We didn't know what it was going to cost, maybe not this year. Because I'm at a loss because I really don't know what to do here because it does seem like the whole budget is one piece that the people wanted. I don't know if they knew exactly how expensive it was going to be.
So I think if we haven't come back at the next meet, it's a week enough time to get it done.
June 18th, sir?
Yes.
July.
July 18th?
Yeah.
June 18th, next year.
We have some of that to give on my staff. I may have to pull some, any numbers I pull will be a week behind because we are getting reporting from the county. So we have to wait a week to 10 days to get that reporting.
Yeah, that's fine. I think it has to be real up to date, just more of it.
I think that'll give us a better, then we can go in a little more delve it. We can put that on the agenda item and specifically talk about the communication staff. That'll give us a lot more.
There's training involved, a lot of training, I think it's the A D R class, et cetera, and they're hard to get into.
Okay.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief. Keep up the good work.
All right, let's keep going.
Okay. All right, so we've talked about if we go all the way down to the 61 and a half, so we have to pretty much eliminate everything. Maybe some equipment would be able to stay. I think then the two traffic officers would be able to stay, or some variation there. And this is just a kind of recap where we are in our tax rate for this fiscal year. Our effective tax rate was about 48 cents. Our rollback was about 55 and of course we're at 51 and a half. We've already talked about this. And this, we actually talked about that earlier. So the utility fund. All right, and please forgive me, I just realized that there was a line missing. So when you look at the total revenues over the total expenditures and the requested, it's 11 million over 6. So there should be a positive net working capital, but the line that's missing is my transfers out for my debt service payment. So that's where you get the negative 1.4 million. But we do have, still have beginning working capital left from the prior fiscal year. So we're still in the, in the fiscal year with working capital, available working capital of a little over $1 million. And that gives us a contingency reserves of 1.3, which also leaves us at our 20% reserve rate. And the enhancements, the enhancements are very simple. It is one crewman, one utility tech and the two vehicles that go with them. That's, we do, we have staffed up more this fiscal year, actually more than the last two fiscal years, but significantly this year in the utility fund. Because of taking over the heart of Texas water system. So revenues obviously come from the water, wastewater fees, connection fees, and then there's some other like interest. And then again, salary and benefits are also the highest portion of, I take that back, they're not the highest portion of the utility fund. But our contractual services are, is the highest portion. That's our water that we take from Taylor. Our wastewater treatment plant with B R A and then we have another wastewater contract with Flugerville. So those contractual services are what are involved in there and. Two employees, crewmen, utility tech. Basically, I'm showing tonight the same thing as I did at the council retreat, our three major funds. We have more budgeted funds than these three. These are our three major operating funds. So when I put the whole budget presentation for you together for August 1st, it will have all of our funds, our debt service funds, our special revenue funds, our P I D funds, all of that. But I really wanted to really emphasize these three major funds that we have and the streets and drainage fund is also supported by debt service. And two years ago, when we started this streets and drainage fund, we committed to do three, three and a half million dollars each year. Until, up until when our streets were in marching order, so our guys, as you know, Mark's been here the last two council meetings, asking for equipment. And we'll be asking for more equipment again in the upcoming fiscal year as well. They have currently seven employee, seven employee vacancies ready to roll after they get their equipment. So there's nothing shown in here that they're asking for more people because we have seven vacancies right now that will fill once they get all their equipment rolling. So that's the streets and drainage. So the budget timeline, the proposed budget must be filed with the city secretary 30 days before the property tax rate adoption. Our budget hearing, which like I said, we have scheduled August 15th and the 22nd. And then there'll be the budget adoption. As I mentioned earlier, the certified roll comes out on July 25th. And there must be two tax rate hearings and September 29th is that last day to adopt a tax rate. We will be doing ours, the two, the two regular meetings in September and 16, 60% of the governing body must vote in favor of the tax rate. Next steps, August 1st, we'll take a record vote on a tax publication. If y'all choose to take any, any other, any, anything that's going to create any revenue, we'll have to have a vote. So more likely you'll have you taken a vote. So we'll, we'll, we'll do that on August 1st after I give you your, after I provide Mr. Jones your completed budget for, I'm able to, to discuss. And then whatever I'll decide tax rate wise, then we will start working and to whittle that down and get to your actual budget that you're going to adopt and.
You made a good point. I want to make sure. Because before August 1st, we'll have a lot more detailed budget than it has.
Yes.
When you get down to the staffing, it'll have the information on the staffing, it'll have a lot more detail than, I mean, it's the high level. So you'll have, that document will be coming out.
We deliver, we got to deliver by August 1st.
Yeah.
We are, we are working on what y'all are used to seeing. We're working on finishing that up, so.
If I understand right, what we're voting on on August 1st is what we intend to do.
What we're voting on is the top that we will.
That's kind of right side, or yeah, that's a better way to put it. So, so voting what we possibly could do. And typically procedure sounds like you just kind of start at the top and then you work your way down. We're not saying on August 1st, whatever rate we say, we're not saying this is what we're going to adopt.
Whatever your top's going to be and the public hearing dates.
But once you set that on August 1st, we can't go any higher.
So that's why you set a time you work.
Yeah, so something came up through the budget discussion. If we, if we set it at the 61 and then we said, well, you know, we'd really rather want to do the communications center.
Once you do it, yeah.
You're too late. Okay.
And I'm glad to answer any questions if y'all have any. This has been very productive for me, so thank you.
Yeah, I do. Back on the utility fund piece, so are we still taking money from the general fund to fill into the utility fund or no?
We won't be, we won't be for this fiscal year, but well, if we, if we don't decide to maybe do the debt restructuring, we probably would have to subsidize the next fiscal year, fiscal year 2020.
So on the, on the next presentation, can you show that in the general fund line items where that comes from and then where that goes into the utility fund piece? And then on the utility fund, whether it's in utility or streets and drainage, can you show our revenue numbers for impact fees for the last two or three years as well?
So typically, so the, the bigger document that I, that I provide next will have transfers. You'll see the transfers and that's where you'll see the transfers that'll go from the general fund to the utility fund or whatever. We, I have other transfers that come from other funds that do other things.
Can you notate that one just so I can see it, please, so I understand which one that is? And then will there be any recommendations as to how to avoid that shortfall to pull from the general fund? Because I don't know what that number is going to be, but I'm curious, if we were to do something around the utility fund, would that give us enough money in the general fund? To alleviate some of the tax increase, but still provide some of the service stuff that we're doing? That's why I'm curious how that piece works together.
What are you saying? Make the utility fund solvent so that then you're not using property tax money for utility stuff?
That's what I want to review and see if that's what's possible or what options there are to do that. So I'm not using general fund money in the utility fund.
So and typically the way it works, because there are two, two different types of funds. So you, you can, you can loan between two funds. And, and the expectation is that will be repaid with some simple interest, okay? It's not, and I'm not going to use the word subsidizing, that's not, that's not really where I, that I should use. You can do a loan from one fund to the fund and, and it happens quite often. In fact, I've had to work for another city that while we were building our, or expanding our wastewater treatment plant. Because we had, this is back in the oil and gas days, we had a flood of people and a big manufacturer coming in that we were going to have to have that expansion done. We were going to benefit from it, but in the meantime, we had to provide for it. So the general fund loaned the utility fund the money to, to make its debt service payment and do what it needed to do. And then that utility fund, within the next year actually, paid back the general fund. So, so that's not an uncommon thing, but I do see what you're saying about, you know, what could we be doing with?
But yeah, I don't want to do a loan and a restructure and do that. I'd rather, are there options to boost the, boost the utility fund? Without taking it from the general fund and leaving the two so they operate separately from each other since we're early in this and if we're projecting that. Are there, are there options to avoid that is where I'm going with this?
So.
Generally, if you want to deal with that, there's really about two ways. Either increase revenues, which, you know, is, can, can mean a utility rate increase or decrease costs, which means, you know, cutting. So we'll come back to you with some proposed options, but I say that because generally we'd like to try to do a, a rate study. To be able to, you know, articulate that. I mean, we, the last rate study we had came to the council and asked for a 25% increase for four years in a row. In order to make the utility fund healthy. At the time, you know, I didn't, the council decided as well not to do that. I didn't, I didn't want to do that either. I mean, they, the council ended up saying, you know, this, or city manager, here's, here's 25 cents. Go, go figure out how to make it work. So, so that's, that's the balance, but we'll, we'll come back with some options. We'll demonstrate, show what the trend, what the transfers are.
Because what's the, what do you, what do you view the expected transfer to be for next year as of right now? What are you budgeting? Do you know it?
Yeah, well, like I was.
We just got to come back to that.
Yeah, I, I, because yeah, it's been about a year and a half since we did the rate study. It was before we had the heart of Texas. So there, and then there are some other developments that are happening that will be big.
And we may, we may have to just, we're going to go look at it, but we may have to come back to you and just say we need to hold up till we get a rate study as well. Because depend on what it, you know, what we see, but we just got to go back and look at it.
Right.
It's a good question, though. We got to just got to look at it.
Yeah, so please just show me what the transfers are going to be and then some options.
My guess is that study won't be done in time to pass a budget, right?
No, it won't. It usually takes.
Take several months.
Yeah, it takes several months to do a rate study. But, but go back and look at the last rate study, make sure that they have, have the last one that was, that was done. And then try to, you know, forecast, extrapolate. So there might be some things we can do to try to look at it, but.
When we do these rate studies, do we compare where we're at currently with other surrounding cities and all that kind of stuff? So we can see that too.
They do a really good job. They benchmark us and everything. They take into consideration not only your consumption, but your C I P, your growth potential. Which, you know, we've got some, some, some projects that are going to be high water users coming online. So that's going to change things dramatically. So, you know, having somebody who's got that expertise that can project and kind of bring that in. Say if this happens and this happens and this happens, what we're all talking about, then this is where you're going to be and this is how quickly you're going to get there. So I've worked with them a couple of different cities, so yeah, we need to screen them on board.
Any other information you need to make sure that going forward?
Can you make sure the restructuring presentations in the next packet as well for us if that's still on the table?
Yeah, that's, that's a good one because restructuring was, you know, was one of the tubes that I had looked at when the council gave me the 20, gave us the 25 cents and say, go solve it. One part of that was cutting expenses, right? But the other part is trying to restructure as well to get more liquidity into the system. So we will make sure it's.
And one more thing, can you add in the projected capital increases that will affect that debt service primarily the flow line between north and south? Sorry, I'm adding a lot for you.
So repeat that one.
A $10 million project for the.
The gravity.
The gravity line. Thank you. Sorry, couldn't think of the term. And what that will do to it.
That's the one trans, transferring.
From the north to the south.
Central plant to the south plant. Yeah, okay.
Please.
It might be also if y'all want, it might be helpful just to have that, that conversation as well because having an engineer can educate the public on.
Yeah, that's, yeah, for the next one, have someone there to.
So this is by next Thursday?
Is that when the next meeting?
No, no.
Oh, is she going to put a cotton?
Sure, next Thursday.
I think on the last two, we already saw that, we saw that presentation at the retreat, so we can probably just recycle the same thing.
Restructure?
And put it out.
I'll just be curious, yeah, once it, once it rolls into all the debts, once it rolls into the whole new budget, like how those pieces play in, so.
Yeah, the only new piece, if we, if we include that we used at the retreat, the only new piece would be just making sure that the newer members, because I know some of the older members have seen it. But the actual rate study would be good for you to read.
Yeah. Any others?
I think I gave her enough.
Thank you very much.
So I do have one thing before we move on to executive.
Okay. Any more questions on the budget?
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. I know you, just talking about your, it's kind of hectic.
That's fine.
Appreciate all your work.
Mayor, looking at past executive session to action relative to executive session, I would like. would like to pull ten B, as I don't feel the need to reaffirm an authority that's already been granted.
Second. So I have a motion by Mayor Scott Rose.
Mayor.
Mayor. I just got promoted, yeah.
Congratulations, Scott.
Y'all wanna switch seats?
Yeah.
I don't.
A motion by council member Scott Rose to pull item D from the agenda. Second by Mayor Pro Tem Hines. Any question or discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Why is it part of an action related to the executive session, but I don't see necessarily an action item in executive session? Is it just covered under the big piece of nine A, or, because it just kind of pops out with that, but I don't see it.
I ask the same thing, and it basically, it's in the umbrella. Nine A's an umbrella that includes ten B and ten A.
Just so I know, where was it previously?
Affirmed?
Yeah, I've never heard of Cottonwood.
I don't have the date, but I can find it for you.
All right, yeah, I was gonna say, I, I saw that, and the person asked the mayor is, what is it? And.
So this was done at a council meeting, probably prior to our time being on, I guess?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember either, so.
Can someone give a quick brief on what it is? What River or Cottonwood Development Corp. is?
When we get the date, we're gonna look it up.
It's, it's, it's the new, it's the new local government corporation.
That will help facilitate the perfect game development.
So I've been following pretty close, so when was there a specific vote to create that, or was it covered under the big giant umbrella on April eighteenth with everything else?
I believe the, well, this is a, this is really a, needs to come from you, Mike. I mean, it's a question, so I would think it's probably covered underneath the, to take in all necessary steps to effectuate the development, but.
I'm trying to go, go back to the.
So April eighteenth would have been that meeting.
I'm not being funny, is the River Creek development used up, or can you not use a, do you have to use a different entity for every time, every development you do, or just out of curiosity?
You, you wanna segregate them out?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the management risk.
You don't, you, you don't want one of them doing two projects.
Is that pertur's? Pertur's project, or?
Yeah, no, it, it's just, it's just a clean way for accounting purposes, given the new disclosure rules surrounding, you know, bonds and everything else. I mean, it's just from an accounting standpoint, and also too, just the risk mitigation. You tend to look at these similar to, almost like a SPE, like a single purpose entity in some respects. You really want to make sure that, that they're really singularly focused on a project. And so what I've seen, and what, what I've done in other communities in this instance is that, you know, here we naming it Cottonwood Development Corp., but it can be LGC one, LGC two, LGC three, whatever case is, but just a way of managing the risks and keeping it really specific to a specific project, and also managing the, the certs and, and warrants that comes with the bond issuance as well.
So because the discussion's going, I don't want to beat a dead horse. If the only vote to create this local government corporation was April eighteenth, and it was done with very limited discussion, and I still haven't seen the documents for what the local government corp. is going to be doing, and it's already going to be created, this is one of the reasons why, two issues. I have a huge issue giving away the ability to get all those documents, and I have a huge issue doing one big massive vote that incorporates all this stuff, and then I, things keep popping up that I haven't seen, and that big umbrella just, I don't understand everything that's under there, so it just, it gives me pause. That this is here, but I've never heard of it, not that I've been here that long, but it, it just makes me nervous that April eighteenth was the only vote to do this, and the public doesn't understand what Cottonwood Development Corporation is, but it's a local government code, corporation with an interlocal agreement with us, but the agreement and nothing else has really been presented publicly, and I'm assuming it's not privileged what that, what that agreement is between the city and local government code, so I, this is where I keep having pauses around these things. So I know you guys want to pull it to reaffirm, but I'd rather motion to table it or pull it into executive session and someone really explain this to me, so when I, when we come back out, I know exactly what ten B is doing on the agenda and exactly what it is, because I have no idea what this is. So I'm voting to pull something that I've never seen, or I'm voting to reaffirm something I've never seen, and it gives me huge pause that I'm up here making these decisions, but I don't know anything of what I'm doing.
I don't think you can do executive session on it, because if it's a corporation owned by Hutto, then it's between us and essentially Hutto, right? So you don't have any proprietary financial information related to Cottonwood.
Depends on whether it's part of the development package.
Well, like, I'd like to know, have they been meeting?
No.
No.
You, you say that, like, I should know that, but see.
No, no, I was saying it to, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm multitasking, and I'm just saying, no, they have.
Who serves on that board? Is it council members, or?
Well, wait, is it even, is it even created?
So in order for them to meet, they would have to have posted an agenda and et cetera. I guess what I would also too recommend to the council is also too, to pull ten A, you know, given information that I've received today, I don't think there's any need for ten A anymore. So if you're gonna pull one, and, you know, I think you pull both of them, and in that way.
But are we pulling them to discuss them later, or are we just pulling them because they've already been decided upon?
Well, wait, ten A has never been decided upon, okay?
Okay.
All right. Ten B, okay. Not to sound like this is a riddle, but you've either already given the city manager the authority, or you haven't, okay? So if you have in the past, and I'm still trying to find it, he has that authority already. If he does, if you haven't done it in the past, then he doesn't have that authority.
How do we find that? I mean, how do we find that out?
Well, for one, it's in the charter under four point oh.
I believe it is four point oh one subsection F. What's that say?
Basically, what it says is that the city manager has the authority to execute programs and, and projects once it's been.
Just so happens, I always bring.
Keep going, Tom, I was listening.
What section?
Please.
Four point oh one says, the, four point oh one provides that if the, the city manager can execute documents, and so it, it's real important is if you've got, if you've already approved something, then he can execute the documents necessary to carry that out.
Yeah, I'm not debating that piece, I'm just curious when it was done, and if it was done, where was it discussed, is what I'm curious. That, yeah, I'm not debating whether Otis can, or City Manager Jones can authorize, once it's given to him, you can do that, I'm just curious.
Well, if you're pulling, if you're pulling ten A, and you, if you pull ten B and you pull ten A, then there really no action on it, so that gives, if there's.
That's why I'm asking the council to do.
Really, this, this discussion's gotta go around the circle of. I think what Tanner's saying, if you pull ten B, which is reaffirming, we may want to reaffirm if we know what we're.
Affirming.
We're not affirming, we don't know, and so.
We could talk about it and just add it to the next.
I mean, if you pull it, you can pull it, or you can, you can either say, I'm sorry, can you pull it?
Can I amend the motion to put it on the next agenda item, or the next council meeting then?
No, because.
Yes, I can.
You would have to make a amendment to the motion.
Yeah, but I can make a amendment to the motion.
Can I call a quick timeout?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
Okay, see, you have a motion, you have a second, you can have discussion about that motion, and, and the discussion has to focus on that motion.
Right.
After you rule, a, after there's a determination on that motion, that wouldn't affect whether at this meeting or another, or outside this meeting, anybody moves to, to put it back on the agenda for the next meeting, okay?
Hold on, you can still, you're saying you can't amend the motion, we talked.
No, 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 what, what I'm saying is, you have a motion and a second, so the discussion needs to be about the motion, namely, do you want to pull the item or not, okay? But even if the item gets pulled, that doesn't stop.
It can come back at the next, at the next meeting.
Yeah, anybody can put it back on at the next meeting.
No, I see your point, okay.
So the, the motion is to pull ten B from the agenda at this point.
Well, I asked if the council would also consider any of that motion to pull ten A as well.
So what you're asking, Tom, what you're asking is.
Let's go ahead, let's vote, let's do, let's do this one. Let's, let's vote on it, because we got the motion in the second, and then we can do a second motion to do, if, so, if we so choose to pull ten A. So I have a motion to pull ten B from the agenda by council member Scott Rose, I have a second by Mayor Pro Tem Hines. That's the motion that we're voting on, so anybody have a question on the motion? Call for vote.
Mayor Goll.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hines.
Aye.
Council member Scott Rose.
Aye.
Council member Schneider.
Aye.
Council member Gordon.
Aye.
Council member Turner.
Aye.
Council member Tina Rose.
Nay.
Motion passes six one.
Mayor, I make a motion to pull ten A.
Second.
So we have a motion by council member Scott Rose to pull ten A, second by council member Turner.
Only question is, why did we want to pull ten A if we haven't done it for sure? Why wouldn't we want to discuss it tonight?
It's on there.
If we haven't done the interlocal agreement, why wouldn't we want to discuss it tonight?
I think once he tells us some information in executive session.
Don't we want to have opportunity for, for you to kind of understand what it is and all that, that like, what a.
But wasn't it not going to be covered in executive session, is my question? So we're pulling it, but was it gonna be part of the executive session coverage?
We still talked about it, we just want action on it.
We're just pulling the action.
Oh, just pulling the action, okay.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I, part of the reason why I'm kind of good with this is because I didn't know what in the heck the local government corporation was, so I went and said, Otis, can you please explain this to me? And we sat down for an hour in your office, and it took me a while, and I finally wrapped my head around it. And so that was helpful for me, because I just sat down with city manager and said, help me understand what we're doing here.
Okay, I got a better understanding now. So we're pulling the action, but we'll still get briefed in executive, okay. I'm good with that.
Stuff like that happens, can we share that information? Like if one person goes and spends that much time with questions, I mean, aren't we supposed to be sharing that to where it will? If that helped me, then I would know.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to, I'm happy to share it, I just, I thought I was just the dumb one.
And you're also the city city manager, if not yourself?
I just want to state.
No, that's a good point, though.
Well, I gotta state the motion.
I could go, I could go sit with the city manager, and so there could be seven people sitting with the city manager, ask them the same question.
No, if it's not posted.
Or one person could ask them, and then, I'm being, I'm just throwing it out there, but.
That's, that's the problem with sharing, you just have to make sure you don't have a walk-in quorum.
Yeah.
You can share, just make sure you watch your.
Yeah, I think the point we were making earlier on all the information is when one person asks for information, everybody gets it, and then here's an instance of one person asks information and I'm not, I'm not mad at Councilman Gordon for knowing what Cotton Creek is now.
No, 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 I, and, let me clarify, I asked what a local government corporation is. I didn't ask specifically about this one, I just said, help me understand what a local government corp. is, and so now we're talking about local government corp., and I'm like, yeah, I know what that means, I know what we're talking about.
And this is not directly related to the motion, but just so everybody understands, one of the ways that, that some city managers manage is that when any member of the city council has a question, the, the practice is just come in, or make an appointment, come in, sit down, give some indication, hey, this is what I want to talk about, and, and they just work through it that way, that, and that can be a very effective way of working, but when you've had a two-hour conversation, or even a thirty-minute conversation, it is sometimes difficult to communicate everything that's been discussed in that meeting, and it's problematic for any member of the council to do it because of the Open Meetings Act. It's also difficult for the city manager to essentially summarize it all and send it out to everybody who didn't come by. So that, that, that's the problem you run into.
And, you know, I've always managed from that standpoint, and, I mean, you guys take delivery and stop by, anytime you do stop by, I try to make sure I stop what I'm doing when I can, if I don't know you're coming by, but if I do, just to talk through what the issues are.
It's part of, it's part of our research as a council member.
Yeah, so I do.
Some of it, sit down with you, some, I mean, part of it's reading documents, that's all the stuff that we do, kind of leading up to get as much information as we can.
Well, there's times, too, that, you know, council members will ask me about something, and I'll just direct them to that particular department. It's, for example, Councilwoman Turner came in and met with our engineering staff the other day for, for some time to get some additional information, so it's just, you know, we, we just try to make sure we get you the information you need to answer your questions.
Okay, so we have a motion to pull ten A from the agenda.
I'll second if nobody did.
I got a second, I got a motion first and a second. The motion made by council member Scott Rose, second by council member Turner. Call for vote.
Council member Tina Rose.
Aye.
Council member Turner.
Aye.
Council member Gordon.
Aye.
Council member Schneider.
Aye.
Council member Scott Rose.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Goll.
Aye. Motion passes seven.
With that now, before we head back, I'd like to make a motion to add on the next agenda, a discussion and action on an in-house city attorney.
There was no second on there?
I'll second, I'm always down to have a discussion.
Yeah, if we need a second to discuss, yeah.
Can't discuss and can't act on it, all you can do is make a motion, get a second, and then it moves to the.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, yeah, okay.